It's March 9th, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Time is now 6 o'clock. First order of business is a roll call. Mr. Heaney?
Andy Beakin.
Here.
Olin Gambrell.
Yeah.
Eric Curtin.
Eric won't be in attendance.
Chris Souza.
I'm here.
Thomas Severo.
Yeah.
James Miller.
Here.
David Huntum.
There.
And Thomas Heaney, here.
For tonight's business, unless there's any more recusals, Mr. Gambrell will be voting this evening. Second, we have no minutes to adopt tonight. The adoption of the minutes will occur at the next regular scheduled meeting, which is March 23rd, same time, same station. So what I'd like to do is get right into our cases for the evening. Mr. Heaney, if you could read the first case?
Petition of Kelly and Andrew Salem owners by their attorney, David P. Martland, for a variance from section 603 to allow the construction of a 14 foot 6 inch by 18 foot 6 inch deck and a 15 foot by 35 foot pool, resulting in an increase in lot coverage of 22% where 50% is allowed. Said real estate is located at 444 Purgatory Lane and further identified as Lot 45 on Tax Assessor's Platt 121.
Mr. Martland, are you on the line? Angela, do you see Mr. Martland out there?
He'll be coming in right now.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, I'm here.
Hello, David, can you tell us about your client's petition?
Certainly. Also, I am logged in with another computer, I believe with my email address or under the the name David M., and I would like to utilize that and the share the screen option at some point during during this presentation.
I think we can.
Oh, thank you, Angela. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, David Martland. On behalf of Kelly and Andrew Salem, with me this evening, I have Andy Salem, who is going to testify. I also have Nate Godfrey, who has reviewed the matter and is going to testify as an expert in real estate. Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, this petition involves the expansion of a deck and the installation of a pool on property located at 444 Purgatory Lane. Since the filing of the application, we've come to learn of the objection of an abutting neighbor who abuts the property to the east, Mr. Schmaltz and his wife. The property is down gradient from my client's property. Since learning of that objection, my clients went back and attempted to address, you know, concerns relative to those objections. Unfortunately, we weren't able to resolve those issues. So we're proceeding tonight, and I know that Mr. Jackson, Russ Jackson, is representing the objector. As part of that process, my clients have you know, essentially amended their request to remove, we're removing the request for the deck. So we're not going to be proceeding on that portion of the application. And we're going to be moving forward on the application with the revised pool plan truth, making the pool a little bit smaller, changing the configuration a bit. So there's, as a result of some of those concerns, although we weren't able to reach, you know, any type of resolution with the neighbor. If if I could ask at this point, that Mr. Salem be sworn in as a witness?
Sure, Mr. Salem, raise your right hand. You swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
State your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrew Salem, 444 Purgatory Lane in Middletown.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salem, you and your wife Kelly own the property at 444 Purgatory Lane, is that correct?
We do.
Okay. Angela, may I ask that I have the share the screen enabled? Does everyone have the, can see the area map?
We can.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Salem, can you see the pointer?
Yes.
Okay, so on Purgatory Lane, where the pointer is, this would be your home?
Correct.
Okay, that's 444 Purgatory, correct?
Correct.
And to the north, your property is abutted by property of St. George's, is that correct?
Correct.
And to the west, you've got single family homes, that's right?
The property just to the south of your cursor is, consists of, I believe, apartments occupied by occupied by St. George's faculty, I think like some of the, mostly some of the younger faculty.
And further to the west, that would be the St. George's hockey rinks, is that right?
Correct.
And the property to the south?
That's occupied by John and Jan Hayes.
And that's a single family residence?
Correct.
And then directly to the west? This would be property owned by Mr. and Mrs. Schmaltz, is that correct?
Correct.
And that is, as you understand it, understand the objector for this evening, correct?
I believe so.
Now, the location of the pool would be located in the rear yard, is that right?
Correct.
How long have you and Kelly owned this property?
Since this past May.
That would be May 2020?
Correct.
So a little bit less than a year.
Correct.
Now, you own other property in Middletown, is that correct?
We do.
And where is that property?
The property that we own is at 703rd Beach Road, which is essentially on the corner of Third Beach Road and Indian Ave, just one up from the corner, and we've owned it since 2009.
And how have you used that property in the past?
We've just used it as a summer home, our primary residence until, until May was was in Newton, Massachusetts, and we moved down to Middletown full-time to this address, the Purgatory Lane address, when we, when we, when we bought the house, and we've moved down here permanently. Our, all three of our kids are enrolled in school here.
Okay. And so you've made a decision to make, you know, Middletown and Aquinic Island your home. Is that, that's correct?
Enthusiastically, yes.
The this property that you purchased, it was a newly built, single family home, is that, is that right?
Yeah, fairly. We weren't the first people to occupy it. The person who bought it, who built it, was the first person to occupy it, and we, you know, bought it shortly thereafter.
It's your understanding that they redeveloped the property, they demolished the prior home that was there and built this existing home, correct?
Correct.
The the lot in question, your lot only has, what is it, 20, 21,762 square feet of land area?
Correct.
And what zoning district are you located in?
We're in an R40 zone.
Okay, so that would make this particular lot, you know, a non-conforming lot.
Correct.
And the existing lot coverage is presently 19%, is that right?
That's correct. And that's the way we purchased it.
And the could you just explain to the board what it is you're looking at doing here? What is your proposal?
Sure, I think it's, you know, pretty straightforward. We're looking to add a pool that is we were originally looking to add, expand our deck a little bit and to add a pool. And after talking to our neighbor, we decided to eliminate the deck expansion and try to get a variance to put in a pool, it's not a big pool, it's kind of substandard in size, it's 15 by 31 and a half feet. And so we decreased the original size of the pool rectangle. We did change the shape of it a little bit and move the, what will be a whirlpool spa next to it. So it's 31 and a half by 15 is the pool size, and the spa size is kind of standard, eight by eight. And it increases the lot coverage by a little over 2% from 19 to right around 22%. And we meet, we meet all the required setbacks from the, from the property lot.
Okay, now just directing your attention to the screen, this was the original site plan, proposed plan that was submitted, is that right?
Yep, so it's changed slightly, yep.
And so this area shaded in gray, that was the proposed deck expansion, is that right?
Yes.
And so?
Correct, and that's been eliminated.
And so we're and obviously, what's shown in blue was the original pool footprint, correct?
Right.
The and this plan, I direct your attention to the screen, would be the revised plan eliminating the deck expansion and and reconfiguring the pool layout.
Right, so that, that pool that you're seeing there is actually smaller than the previous schematic. So the pool size has actually shrunk in the, in the whirlpool, as you can see, is separate.
And previously, the whirlpool was going to be located within the?
In the rectangle, yeah, it's a rectangle, that's right.
Now, if you had the opportunity to discuss this proposal with any of your neighbors?
Yes, we've discussed it actually with, with all of them, so the neighbor closest to us to our south is John and Jan Hayes, and they have actually, they're actually the neighbors who could see it. And they, they were fine with it. They actually, I believe, submitted a letter that the board should have in support of our proposal. So they're perfectly fine with it. We also talked to our neighbors across the cul-de-sac with us, from us who have who have a pool, and they were perfectly fine with it. And then, of course, we've had some discussions with Dana Schmaltz, who is our neighbor to our east. And they have a summer home to our east of our property. And so we've had some discussions relating to that, and it's our understanding that the Schmaltzes object to it.
So you weren't able to reach any sort of compromise with the, with the Schmaltzes, correct?
That's, that's correct, and then pack it down as you'd like.
The Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask, has the board received the email of Dr. Hayes that was submitted on Friday?
Yes, we have it, and if you'd like, I can read it for the record. It's from Dr. John Hayes dated Friday, March 5th, and it's addressed to Chris Costa, Angela Marshall at the zoning office. "To whom it may concern, my wife Jan and I are the neighbors of the Saloms to their immediate south at 446 Purgatory Lane. We wanted to let the town board know we have no objections to their pool project. I regards John Hayes." And that is in the file, and I'm going to mark it Exhibit 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just referring back to the overall area map, Mr. Salem, the Hazes live directly to the south in this property. Is that correct?
Correct.
So would it be fair to say that the existing lot size and the existing conditions associated with this property cause a hardship to you?
I think in the, I think in the legal terms, in the, in the legal term, it is a hardship. I think, you know, it is a small lot relative to, this is obviously stuff that we, quite frankly, never thought much about. When, certainly when we were purchasing the property, but, you know, we didn't, we certainly didn't understand that we were in an R40 zone in what was a, and is an odd-sized lot for, for the zoning that we are in. And, and I, you know, we walk our, you know, our, our dogs and our kids ride their bikes around the neighborhood in Don Tuckerman's Point, and so we, you know, we know that pools in the in the neighborhood are quite common, and obviously, a couple of our neighbors have pools. And without the variance, we would not be able to construct the pools. I guess that is our hardship.
And we touched on it briefly a little bit ago, you didn't create this existing hardship, meaning the size of the lot or the existing lot coverage, correct?
No, I mean, we purchased the home, you know, quite frankly, as it is today.
The hardship for which you're seeking relief for lot coverage is due to the unique characteristics, characteristics of this particular property, it being, you know, undersized. And it already at 19% lot coverage. And it's not due to the sort of general character of the surrounding area, correct?
That's right. The lot size and the existing house footprint are unique characteristics that cause the hardship, and we're just, you know, we're just trying to have full enjoyment of the property and our rear yard by installing the pool.
This hardship obviously isn't as a result of any physical or economic disability of either you or Kelly, right?
Correct, it's all existing conditions.
And it's not your intention, and the hardship isn't the result of any desire on your part to realize a greater financial gain, right?
No, no, we're, it's, we're just simply trying to add a pool, and we're, you know, we're down here full-time. Now, we have three kids that are ages 11, 9, and 9, and and we just, you know, we just thought it would be enjoyable for them to, to have a pool. It's a, it's a, you know, very small increase in size to the lot coverage, a couple percent. It's at grade, it, it does not provide any visual obstruction. The only neighbors, in fact, who can see it are the Hazes who are in support of it. And, and, you know, obviously, it's, it's going to remain a single family home, and so that's our pretty simple intention.
Now, you said the only neighbors that would be able to see it would be the, your neighbors to the south? The Hazes. And you're saying that the neighbors to the east, you don't believe would be able to see, see the pool?
I don't. I think that, you know, it's probably hard to see, I'm sure some of the, hopefully, some of the board members are familiar with the street and the area. It's, it's a hill, right? So obviously, it's tough to appreciate the topography on the, with the satellite here, but it fails, it slopes down, you know, fairly significantly, so, and then right where your, right where your yellow line is, is a pretty substantial thick row of privet that that really prevents, that would prevent them from, from seeing it. Of course, you know, they might be able to see it from you know, the second floor of their home. I've never been up there, or, you know, certainly their roof, but but not from their, you know, their, their ground level at all.
And you would estimate that the privet would be, would it be approximately six feet high over a portion, and, you know, maybe 12 feet high in a different area?
Yes, that's correct. So the, the, the line of sight to the northernmost part is mostly, you know, around probably a little bit more than six feet, probably like six or seven or close to eight, and then on the western, call it half of that property line, excuse me, the southern half of that property line, it's probably 15 feet or so. It's pretty well guarded.
Now, in, in coming up with this plan, do you believe that this is really the least relief necessary in order to be able to enjoy a pool that at this property?
Yeah, we do. We, you know, we, we've, we've put a ton of thought into it. We, you know, we obviously originally had the, you know, we really, we originally had the deck expansion. We were hoping that we could put, you know, a dining room deck. We basically, you know, kind of live off on the deck during, during, you know, during, when the weather's nice, and but, you know, we, we, we want to be good neighbors, and we've, you know, had discussions with our neighbors to our east, and we, you know, tried to you know, do our best to accommodate it and, you know, minimize our footprint, and we eliminated the expansion of the deck. We also, you know, the pool that we're proposing is not, you know, it's not particularly large. It's a, it's a, it's a substandard pool, substandard sized pool. It's smaller than our, the, the, smaller than the pools that our neighbors have to our east and to our west. And, but, you know, the, it fits the, you know, yard nicely without being without being unreasonable, and and we think it's the smallest amount, the smallest pool that we can put in there to, you know, give us a reasonable and, you know, sort of full enjoyment of the backyard.
And if you didn't receive the variance, this, this would, you know, it would amount to more than a mere inconvenience for you, right?
I think that's right. We, you know, we weren't aware of any zoning issues when we, when we, when we bought the when we bought the property, the deck is, you know, off the kitchen and the main living area. It's, you know, it's an integral part of the house. When we bought it, we obviously relied on the fact that the house had been recently built and, and obviously had a certificate of occupancy that was issued by the town.
And, you know, without obtaining a lot coverage variance, you simply can't build a pool, right?
That's my understanding.
And so you know, that, that in and of itself would be more than a mere inconvenience, because you you just, you're not allowed to have, have a pool, which would be a, you know, it's a fairly common amenity in the area, correct?
Yeah, I mean, of course, that's up to the town board side, but, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions for Mr. Salem?
Okay, you have another witness you'd like to bring forward?
Mr. Chairman, I think you should inquire as to whether Mr. Jackson wants to cross-examine the witness.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Mr. Jackson, are you, would you like to cross-examine? I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right, great, appreciate that. Mr. Salem, my name is Russell Jackson. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Schmaltz, the owners of the property at 468 Purgatory Road. I'm just going to have a few questions of you regarding your testimony. So you know, you testified that you really didn't think about zoning for this property when you, when you purchased it, is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, certainly not from a, I don't, I don't think, I've purchased lots of properties in various places that I've lived throughout my life, and I don't think I've put much thought into, into zoning or lot coverage. So I am, I am learning a little here as we go along.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is you, at least as far as zoning, you didn't engage in any type of extended due diligence prior to purchasing the property, is that right?
No, I guess it's our understanding that if, that, you know, as, as the laws that govern purchasing a property, that the previous owner would have to have a certificate of occupancy that would that would warrant, you know, kind of clear title of the property.
Did you at least understand that the lot you were purchasing was smaller than what was required in this zoning district?
No, sir.
Okay. So based on the certificate of occupancy, it's, you had no knowledge of the fact that what exists there today may exceed the lot coverage that was allowed for this zone?
No, sir, at the time, we didn't have a survey done that would have, you know, confirmed the existing lot coverage and the percentages and really any sort of Um, and the percentages and really any sort of um, uh, you know, uh, boundaries of the home. And uh, et cetera. I think we re- relied on the clear title uh, to hopefully ensure us of that.
So, Mr. Salem, if I understood your testimony, when you purchased this property, it, it sounded like it was your intention that you were relo- relocating here as your primary residence, correct?
Uh, actually, no. Um, we, we didn't. Um, we um, you know, as we mentioned, we've had the home. On Third Beach Road for, since two thousand nine. Um, and uh, we uh love it. Uh, it was our happy plate. And then uh, uh, one day I was um, uh. Standing in a, in a line uh, and this, I was looking at my phone and this, and this property kind of came across Realtor.com. And I sent it to Kelly, who's sitting beside me and said, you know, let's go see this place. And uh, we went and saw it and uh, the next day, um, and as soon as we walked in the door, I said, this is, I think this is where we want to retire. Um, but we uh, uh, we had no intention actually of, of moving here uh full time. Um, I think what um, happened in twenty twenty um, changed a lot of things. We um, uh, two of our kids were um, uh, going to uh, school uh face to face. Uh, in Newton in the fall and our daughter's school was not. And um, we decided that we um, couldn't do that to her. Um, so uh, made a very difficult decision and um, really difficult decision, actually. We, we um, uh, enrolled her um, down here um, at Saint Michael's. Cause, cause they were going face to face and my wife and I would split up uh during the week. So uh, one of us would be down here with her. Um, and, and one of us would be up with the boys during the week. Uh, which was tough, because you know, I had, we, we both had to work and uh, and then we'd switch halfway um, through the week. So my wife and I would kind of pass each other on one twenty-eight. And we didn't know how long it was gonna last, but we, we um. Uh, decided that um, you know, through just exhaustive conversation that, you know, why don't we uh, move to Middletown? Um, you know, why don't we just put all three kids school down here? And um, uh, you know, and make this our permanent resident. And it was a really, really difficult decision. Because my parents are deceased, but Kelly's parents are still alive. And, and uh, and we left Newton to uh, move down here full time. Um, and it's great. We love it. And uh, we feel really blessed that, you know, we're fortunate enough to uh, you know, live in a place like this. And um, but you know, I think the move down here full time with the family uh, was, was a, a direct impact of. You know, COVID and the, you know, the, the great wildebeest migration that you see in the, in the, in the United States of, of, of humans and families. Uh, over the last year.
So, Mr. Salem, even though maybe the, the intent wasn't there at the moment you purchased, it wasn't long after you decided to make it your primary residence. And you quickly engaged in expansion plans, correct?
Um, no, I mean, we were here, um, you know, we were here all summer and um.
Well, let me just quickly, the, the original pool plan is, is, it was prepared as of November of twenty twenty. You purchased in May of twenty twenty, so um, it seems like it didn't take long before you decided that the space. Of the house that you purchased in May wasn't sufficient.
I just didn't have a pool, Russ. Um, I mean, I think if you, you know, kind of looked out the deck and you're like, you know, you're looking at, you know, and your neighbors have pools around you. Like, I, and you got three little kids, uh, you know, I don't think that, I don't think that, I, I don't think that saying that you want to put in a pool. Is a, is, is a major change. Uh, you know, it's a, it's a big bucket of water. It's like, you know, it's, it's like pools.
So, um, Mr. Chairman, if I could screen share, I, I have some photographs that I wanted to share with Mr. Salem. Um, to review with him during my cross-examination.
Uh, as long as Angela can take care of it.
We just need to stop sharing what's currently on the screen.
Okay, so David, you have to give up your sharing.
Stop share.
Thank you, David.
Then Mr. Martlin should be able, or sorry, Mr. Jackson should be able to share then.
I disagree with his screenshot there.
I like it.
All right, uh, Mr. Salem, you had mentioned previously about, you know, seeing the listing on Realtor.com. And I've got a series of photographs. I just thought they'd be helpful to give some context. As your testimony and my client's testimony proceeded tonight. But um, so looking at this, um, again, a series of photographs that were part of the listing, is this, this is your house, is it, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, and thi- these photographs, I'm gonna go through, there's um, I think a total of ten photographs. So let me just go through them, uh, the, your, your property from different angles. Obviously, your house, correct? And this would be from Purgatory Lane?
That's correct.
And again, from the front?
Correct.
So this is an aerial, this shows the back of the house, correct?
Correct.
And this, this would be um, the eastern face of your home. Which uh, faces directly towards the Schmaltz's property, right?
Correct.
And this is uh, again, a shot of the rear of your house from um, the southeast corner of your property?
I guess approximately.
This would be looking out from your property towards the Schmaltz's property and Second Beach, is that right?
Um, I don't know where that picture's taken from.
Okay, is it um, let me go back to that, sorry.
Yep.
That, you don't know if it's taken from inside your home, but that would be the general direction of uh, the perspective from the east side of your house. Looking towards the beach, is that fair?
That's fair.
And then you mentioned that you're on a hillside, so this is sort of a profile of your backyard. As it slopes from Purgatory Lane down towards the Schmaltz property, is that correct?
Correct.
And this would be taken, looks like, from the Saint George's property?
Yes.
Um, you know, I'm looking at your southern boundary. You had mentioned that the haze could see your pool.
Yes.
How, how would they, how would they be, um, how would the pool be visible to them? I'm looking at, to the south of your property, it looks like there's vegetation there.
Um, there's not. Uh, there is, uh, there's, there's not, uh, that's a, that's not a, you can't, can't really see it from there. You can get a, uh, on, on the, the original sort of satellite view that, that David had put on. Um, uh, you, you get a little bit of perspective. You can't see the southern bu- the, the boundary of the property from, from this, from this picture. But on the southern boundary of the property, there's just a, a, a um. Uh, I, uh, I don't know if it's a, I don't know what type of fence it is. It's not a solid fence. It's just kind of like, you know, sort of steel, um, you know, uh, it's the same thing. Goes around the whole property that you can see close by in, in the, in the forefront here. So the hazes are, um, you know, have the, the, the clearest line of sight from uh, you know, onto our property toward the north.
And this is an aerial, this is your, your property in the foreground and the Schmaltz property down the hill from you, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And this would be an aerial, your property at four forty-four and then the Schmaltz property?
Uh, that's correct. And there you can see how the, the hazes can, can see, you know, have a, from, from there. From, from right where your, you know, the northern part of their home have, you know, can see into our backyard. What is our backyard?
But you don't believe the Schmaltz's can see into your backyard?
Um, I don't, uh, certainly, well, they, I'm sure they can see into our backyard uh some. Um, but the, 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 you know, they, they couldn't.
And one more, um, this is just a close-up of four forty.
You can see into, we can see into each other's yards, obviously, during the winter.
So, um, before I proceed with my questions, Mr. Chairman, these, what was a series of ten photographs? If I could have those um, admitted as exhibits, please?
Did you provide them to the zoning office today?
I, I, I'm sorry, I did not email them ahead of time. I wasn't sure which photographs I was gonna use. I can.
As long as, I, I will mark them exhibit, exhibit two. But I, I expressly ask that you send them to the office tomorrow, so we have them.
I will. I'm sorry, I will, absolutely. So, um, Mr. Salem, I'm just gonna go back to. So, the area you want to put the pool is, is, is in the center of your backyard, correct?
That's right.
Right where the, the cursor is?
Yeah.
Now, you had, you had testified that the, the pool's gonna be at grade. Um, your yard slopes significantly towards the Schmaltz property, isn't that right?
Um, towards the, it, so right where the, uh, right where the, the back uh, part of the house meets the ground. Um, it's, it's flat when it comes out, right? So I can't, I'm on my, I'm on my phone here, so it's, it's obviously, let me just kind of zoom in here a little bit, yeah. So kind of right where your, right where your cursor is, when you, you know, if you, um, the pool's gonna be, uh, you know, essentially right where your. Right where your cursor i- is the, you know, the edge, that, that area, you know, fifteen feet, fifteen foot width of the pool. Um, is, is actually um, the flattest surface on, uh, on the property. It's quite flat.
Well, the, the pool's gonna be some distance from the edge of your foundation, if you will. How many feet is the pool away? It's, it's really not adjacent to the house. It's, it's more towards the center of the yard, correct?
It's ten feet.
Okay, so the pool starts about ten feet away from the edge of your uh, lower level patio. And it's, how wide is the pool itself? Fifteen feet?
It's, it's sixteen feet, it's over sixteen feet from the lot line and, or eighteen feet from the lot line, I can't remember. Um, but it is, um, so it's ten feet from, ten feet from the, from, from the house, right? And then um, the pool is fifteen, um, uh, the pool is, hold on one second. Yeah, fifteen feet wide.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm trying to get at is by the time you get to the eastern edge of the pool, you're really not on a flat surface anymore, are you?
No, I think we are.
So it's your testimony that there needs to be no uh retaining wall or, or any type of construction to support this pool?
Not that I'm aware of, but you know, I think we could get to that during any sort of, um, you know, any sort of, you know, engineering work. That we needed to do or building permit work. So, um, you know, but to answer your question as it was asked, it's, it's, it's flat.
So.
And we've had, had landscape architects, um, we've had lands- landscape architects. We've um, uh, you know, come out and uh, and walk us through exactly what it would look like. And there, you know, there, there isn't any, and these are the landscape architects that did um, the uh, you know. Did the original design work on the home, both uh, uh, both engineers as well as landscape architects. And, and they're the ones who installed the um, the current rain gardens that are in. Um, and uh, um, it, that, that, that square area, like you see there, that is more, more, kind of looks like. It has a slightly more burnt down crap to it, that, the reason why it's slightly. Looks a little different is uh, as it's flat.
So you mentioned, you mentioned the rain gardens, that you, you, is it your testimony, the construction of the pool in the center of your yard's gonna have no impact on? Uh, the drainage system that was set up for your property?
Well, according to our years, according to our landscape architects, it's, it would prove. Um, it, it has the potential to in- improve it.
But your, your landscape architect is not testifying this evening, is he or she?
Um, uh, nope, didn't think they would need to.
Okay, so, just so I understand, and I'll move on to a, another topic. Looking at this photograph, you're saying that construction of the pool where, where it's sited on your site plan. Can be installed at grade and doesn't require any type of retaining wall or anything uh, to make the decking or the pool level, is that right?
That's correct. I mean, you're, the, 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 that photograph right there is um, I will, I will grant you that the. I will grant you that the Saint George's field slopes dramatically. Um, but where you can see those, those two openings in our backyard. Um, uh, on the, you know, farthest left of the uh, of the porch there. Um, they, we, you know, it kind of looks like, almost like two garage openings. It's obviously not, it's just a, it's just a post. But right where the pool would be, it's um, I don't know, for lack of a better term, it's flat as a pancake.
So, one of the, one of the things you testified to when Mr. Martlin was asking questions was. Um, that this was the least relief necessary. So I'm gonna ask you, is it your testimony that there's no other location? Uh, on your site where you could accommodate a small pool? Specifically, I'm looking at, you know, the southern portion or along the boundary with um, Saint George's. This is, you, the, the site where you've proposed it is the only one that, that you can, only place you can put it?
Uh, not a hundred percent sure about that, but the site that we're proposing is within the setbacks of. Uh, you know, the required setbacks relative to our neighbors. If we moved it, you know, if we moved it to um, where, I don't know, if you, if you moved it to where. You know, that rain garden is, um, it, I, I, I don't, I, I guess. You know, that would be something we would consider, but um, I don't think the Schmaltz's would like it. Because it's, it's moving it, you know, right now, the, the proposed pool is um, is the closest. Part of their whole property is their driveway. Um, and if we moved it to where that rain garden is, um, it would be closer to their house. And I would be surprised if they would be okay with that.
So, just to understand, is it your testimony um, that without a pool, you would suffer? Some type of inconvenience such that you wouldn't be able to exercise the full use and enjoyment of your property? Is that what you're saying?
Um, Russ, you know, um, we're the most blessed people in the world, right? Um, look at that place. It's, it's, it's an unbelievably beautiful house. I, I grew up in Worcester, Massachusetts. And when I was a kid, if you had said that I would ever have the opportunity um, to live like that. With my family, I'd say you're crazy. So um, are we gonna suffer because we don't have a pool? Um, my kids live two hundred yards from the ocean. Um, so no, I don't think we're gonna suffer. Um, uh, uh, I, I wouldn't quite frankly, put that on the scale of, of suffering. But um, you know, we're, uh, we just like to have a pool. We like to enjoy our yard, you know, and we've really. Um, there are so many ways that um, we're, 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 you know, we're, we're good neighbors. Our neighbors, uh, but you can see their house uh, across the cul-de-sac. Um, you know, Ellen, John, we, 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 we have a lot of fun with them. Uh, we have a lot of fun with our neighbors, the hazes. We had them over for dinner the other night. Um, we're, we're, we're good people in the community and, you know, we're just asking for a pool, it's not, you know, we're not. I, you know, I, it's, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know how you legally define hardship. Um, but I know how you define suffer, and uh, we're not gonna suffer. But um, we just simply are asking for a pool, wanna swim.
So just to follow up on a couple last questions, the neighbors across the cul-de-sac obviously can't, can't see your pool and won't be impacted. By the, by the existence of a pool in your backyard, is that fair to say?
Yeah, it is, but I heard to see before, you know, bef- um, after we filed the application. Yeah, it is. But I heard to see before, you know, bef-, um, after we filed the application, um, after we filed the application and where the notices went out to the neighbors, I mean, we've, you know, we have to learn the whole process here. And after the, um, you know, before the neighbor, before the notifications went in the mail to the neighbors, we, we made sure that we were proactive and reached out to, to everybody and, and, you know, despite the, you know, John and Nell behind us not being able to, certainly being able to see the pool just out of curiosity for, you know, any court sort of, um, uh, construction, things like that. Um, you know, we, we, we made an effort to, to reach out and talk to everybody. Certainly, you know, certainly the Hazes and the, the Schmalzes.
So just, just so I'm clear, is it your testimony that the installation of the pool in the backyard is not going to have any impact on the Schmalzes?
From what perspective?
Their privacy?
Um, I, I don't think, um, I don't think that the installation of the pool will have, um, uh, any sort of meaningful impact on, on their privacy. I don't, um, you know, I don't think that they, um, I don't think that they can see it. Um, so, um, I, I don't, I don't know what that, I don't know what that, that inconvenience or impact on their privacy, uh, would be at all. Um, we don't consider their pool to have an impact on our privacy and we have a, a much, you know, clearer line of sight to it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions right now. Thank you.
Martland? Russ, if you could unshare your screen, that'd be helpful.
Oh, yep, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a very brief, um, redirect from my client.
Sure.
If I could, um, share my screen.
I have a quick question for you, Mr. Martland.
Yes?
Mr. Jackson alluded to the fact of location. Correct me if I'm wrong. This is a, a request because of lot coverage, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, and that, that's.
So now that we're on the property this goes, the request still would be being made for lot coverage?
That, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
I just wanted to, I, I wasn't sure. I kind of got lost in the translation.
Hey Jim, it's Chris Susan. Did you turn your microphone down? Is everyone having a hard time hearing him?
I did turn it down.
Okay, yeah, it's way better, Jim. Thanks.
I didn't want to hear you, have you hear me moving around in my chair. So that's, that's all I had, David. I just wanted to, to get a clarification on that.
Okay. Yeah, and, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, that is the point, um, I, I wanted to raise with my client, um, yeah, Mr. Salem, uh, th- this site plan shows the allowable building envelope for an accessory structure. Is that correct?
David, I don't know what, I don't know what that means. I'm sorry.
So, the, what is indicated in red here on the plan says allowable, um, pool envelope.
Okay.
To meet the setbacks, the pool would have to be located within that area.
Okay, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
You have to be 10 feet from the existing structure. And you have to be, uh, 15 feet from the, the rear yard line, correct?
Right.
And then, and then you have to meet the side yard setbacks on either side. So the, Mr. Jackson asked if you could locate the, uh, the pool in, uh, the area to either the south or to the north. And both of those areas, you'd be impacting the side yard setbacks. Would that be fair to say?
I believe so.
And on, on this plan, it, it, um, it shows how the, the topography levels off in the center of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard for, hard for us to, to, to read. Um, yeah, it, it does certainly levels up.
Yeah, so it, there's a two foot difference, 92 feet to 90 feet over this, this section.
Sounds about right.
And um, obviously the, the town of Middletown has a, a number of, um, uh, regulations and requirements relative to, uh, soil erosion, um, and runoff measures. And you would, um, in connection with any building permit, be required to, to meet all those requirements so that you did not increase either the, the, the rate or the amount of runoff going to your neighbor. Are you aware of that?
Uh, we are, and, uh, we've.
And you would meet all of those requirements, correct?
Of course.
Um, I have no further questions for, uh, Mr. Salem.
Do you have any other witnesses, Mr. Martland?
I do. I have, uh, Mr. Godfrey.
Mr. Godfrey, are you going to interview him or?
Yes, I'm going to, uh, interview him and I'll try to, uh, uh, make it as, uh, as brief as possible.
Mr. Godfrey, are you there?
All in may, yes. Chris Costa.
Uh, no, I'm looking for Mr. Godfrey.
I just let him in.
Okay, thanks, Angel.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Mr. Godfrey, uh, can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes, sir.
You swear the testimony tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
My name's Nathan Godfrey. I'm a real estate appraiser and consultant with uh, offices at 221 Third Street in Newport, Newport Appraisers Group.
Mr. Godfrey, you've appeared before this committee on numerous occasions in the capacity of a real estate expert. So we're going to go ahead and continue to recognize you as such.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Godfrey, um, I, I asked you to review the, uh, the petition, uh, that's before the board this evening. Um, to review the, the property and to, uh, make an assessment as to, uh, the, the compliance of the proposal with the, the standards of a dimensional variance. Would that be fair to say?
That is fair. Yes, sir.
Okay. And, um, um, briefly, uh, in, in undertaking that task, could you, uh, explain, uh, for the record, what it is that, uh, you've done?
Sure. Uh, you sent along to me the relevant, uh, application and supporting documentation. I reviewed that. I conducted a site visit. I took, uh, pictures of the property, uh, the surrounding area, drove the neighborhood. I wasn't familiar specifically with Purgatory Lane until this visit, but, uh, made myself familiar with it and, uh, came back. I take the comp plan, I begin with the comp plan, I look at that, and then the ordinance, then draw some conclusions relative to the appropriateness of the, uh, request.
Now, you're, you, you weren't familiar with Purgatory Lane, but you're, you're very familiar with the general area, the surrounding area. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I just had never been down Purgatory prior to Purgatory Lane.
And, uh, you've, you've been uh, involved in, uh, testifying before this board for, um, I would say, uh, at least a couple of decades. Is that right?
This is my 30, uh, second year, probably, uh, 27 of those testifying.
Um, the you've heard the testimony this evening from the applicant. Is that right?
I have, yep.
Uh, you've, you've, you've looked at the site?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you've, uh, had an opportunity to look at the abutting properties?
Yep.
Um, and uh, you're familiar with the, uh, requirements for obtaining a, uh, dimensional variance? Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes, sir.
And, um, the dimensional variance is is defined by statute as the permission to depart from the dimensional requirements of a zoning ordinance where the applicant for the requested relief has shown by evidence on the record, on the record, that there is no other reasonable alternative way to enjoy a legally permitted beneficial use of the subject property unless granted the requested relief from the dimensional regulations. Is that correct?
I believe that's accurate. Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, the, the use, uh, that's being proposed, a, uh, the, the accessory use of a, of, of the in-ground pool, that would be in, would that be a, uh, legally permitted use?
The short answer is yes. The, the ordinance is completely silent on it.
In the the, um, the only way that you could have a pool at this property would be to obtain the, uh, variance request. Would that be fair to say?
Yes, sir.
So based on that, this application fits squarely within the definition of dimensional variance. Is that right?
It, it's the only way to go. Yes, sir.
Obviously upon the evidence being submitted into the record.
With appropriate, with appropriate evidence.
Um, now, the, the, the standards um, that are laid out in, uh, section 903 of the, the ordinance. The first provides that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not the general characteristics of the surrounding uh, area and is not primarily due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant. Have you an opportunity to review the petition? And, uh, a, a, apply that particular standard?
Clearly backing into that, I'm aware of no physical disability of the applicant nor an economic disability. So the, uh, requirement of a unique characteristic, uh, certainly you're looking at, uh, a whole variety of, of land use going on here from, from ice rinks to open space to, you know, the school, uh, to residential subdivision has resulted in, as a result of that, has resulted in this small lot on this cul-de-sac in this shape. So yes, it is a unique characteristic.
And, uh, obviously the existing lot coverage, um, would also, uh, be a characteristic that results in the need for this hot hardship, correct?
Lot size and e- existing configuration. Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, what about the, uh, the second requirement?
Your second requirement is that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. Uh, I view pools as, uh, a zero value item on a home. Um, I have, I have, uh, instructed more than one person looking to buy a house with a pool to tell them it's a detriment and price is coming down because of it. It's a, it's a hazard and other people, uh, want them. So I, I don't see any greater financial gain from, from a, from a typical viewing of it. Uh, I'm not aware of anything the applicant's done as far as subdivision or development of the site that would result in that being considered a prior action. So I believe they meet that test as well.
And, and the third element? Could you explain that to the board?
The granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent and purpose of this chapter or the comprehensive plan on which the chapter is based. Uh, this, this to me is really the, the critical test here. And if you look at your comprehensive community plan in the land use section, there's seven specific goals in that section. And there's only one that addresses this. And it, it's seeking to strive to, to ensure a balanced and harmonious development pattern. Those are specific language off of that goal. I believe it's goal number one in the land use section. Balanced and harmonious development pattern. Mission accomplished. This is simply a pool going into a neighborhood that's got pools all over the place. Uh, I believe it's beneficial. So you, 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 your comp plan is supported. The other goals go off to, uh, commercial and industrial use and, and, and things that aren't relevant to this application. Uh, so once you've met the test of having the support of the comp plan, then you can look at meeting the test of the ordinance. And this isn't going to change the character of the surrounding area. This is going to be identical to the character of the surrounding area. So we've got the third portion of the, of the requirement.
And, and the fourth portion deals with whether or not this is the least relief necessary.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, do you have an opinion relative to that?
I, I do, and, um, I view that as this is the application that's been presented to me. Uh, that is what I'm reviewing. And, uh, the history of this, there was a larger pool and a deck and those have come off. So, uh, to my way of thinking that, uh, aside from 2% lot coverage, there's no front, rear, side yard relief being sought. This is the least relief necessary.
Uh, in, in your, in your experience, uh, would, uh, in-ground pools of this size be, um, you know, or fairly of a reasonable, um, sized pool?
If, if you ask me to quantify the size of this pool for the surrounding area, the neighborhood and the, the general value range, I would say this is a very modest to small pool.
Uh, and then finally, um, does, uh, the granting of, um, of this amount to, um, or if the, the, uh, the variance is not granted, would this, in your opinion, amount to more than a mere inconvenience?
I, I would say that this is what I would consider appropriate outdoor space and an appropriate outdoor use. To deny someone that opportunity, yes, would be more than a mere inconvenience.
And there would be no other way to have what is a fairly common amenity?
There's no, there's no other avenue legally to, to pursue this that I'm aware of.
Um, I have no further questions for Mr. Godfrey.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have some questions.
I was just asking that when I was on mute, so go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Godfrey, could you explain, uh, what steps you undertook in terms of reviewing this application and inspecting any other records, um, as part of your preparations to render an opinion?
Sure. The, the scope of my, uh, of my review begins with, like I said, a review of the documents that were filed, uh, in support of the application. Uh, a site inspection, a neighborhood inspection, the, uh, the, the, the COVID impact, which keeps us out of the town hall, uh, limits us to what we can do in and out of there. Uh, so my, my research there was limited to what's readily available online through the municipal town hall website.
Did you review any of the building permits?
No.
Actions for this property?
No.
Okay. So, um, in terms of your analysis, you are looking at an application that calls for lot coverage increase from 19% to 21 or 22%. Is that, is that what your testimony is?
Yes, sir.
All right. So you, you don't have any, uh, nothing about the history of the construction of this property within the last couple of years would alter your opinion in that regard?
The only history I'm, I'm aware of is what was available, uh, on the website and the municipal field card.
All right. So one of the, one of the plans that were submitted with the application was, uh, with the current application for this relief was a, um, Northeast Engineers Site Plan uh, that looks like was, uh, generated. that looks like was generated as part of the construction of this house, um, within the last few years. Did you review that site plan?
I don't know specifically what you're speaking of, which plan.
It was part of the application. Did you review the application as part of your preparation?
You're asking about a specific plan. Is it the plan that I'm looking at on, on the screen here? Is that what you're speaking about?
No, um.
If you could show.
I can, I can pull up the application as filed.
Well, I, I don't know specifically what plan you're speaking of.
Okay, I'm going to try to pull it up. Mr. Chairman, um, this is not my exhibit, this is the application that's on file. Um, I can pull it up, or I don't know if, um, Angela can post it?
That would not be something I have.
Yeah, Angela doesn't have it, Mr. Jackson.
We do have that as part of our record, so you can make reference to it, Russ.
Thank you. All right, can everybody see this now?
Mm-hmm.
All right, there we go. So, did you review this, Mr. Godfrey, as part of your due diligence?
Russ, I am working off my, uh, my phone, so from what I can tell, I don't recall reviewing that, but it's super duper small. I'm going to say, no, I did not.
It's got a large sum.
Yeah, I can't, unfortunately, I, you know, it doesn't look familiar to me.
Okay. Well, the reason why I'm asking is because, again, these were plans submitted when the house was built just within the last couple of years, and there were plans that accompanied the application for this pool. And I want to bring to your attention that when this house was constructed, it was, the information presented to the town indicated that lot coverage of the structure would be 14.5%. Are you aware of that?
I'm not aware of that filing, no.
All right. And yet, we're here now with the applicant saying they've got 19% lot coverage, and I'm, I'm trying to understand whether or not that has an impact on your analysis of this project.
Well, it doesn't change the relief being sought. So, uh, if it's in fact 14% and they're going up to, then to the extent that that reduces it, great, but the fact that that's, there's a discrepancy between that number in their filing doesn't have an impact on my thinking, no.
No, I, I guess my, my question is, is it your opinion that this application would still meet the standards if the applicant were essentially going from 14.5% to 21% lot coverage?
No, I, I'll stick with the application that was filed and not get into some conjecture. Thank you.
All right, um, don't you think the information would be important in terms of whether or not the existing structure complies with the zoning ordinance?
Could you re, could you give me that one again, please? You'll ask me.
I'm, I'm curious whether or not it would be important to you as part of your analysis to make an initial determination as to whether or not the existing structure complies with the zoning ordinance?
Uh, I'm going to rely on the application that's filed, uh, as, as accurate. I'm not about to second guess the engineers, no.
All right, um, so, when you get into an analysis of whether or not an applicant is seeking the least relief necessary, um, whether or not they are asking for 1 or 2% lot coverage, or whether they're asking for 6 or 7% lot coverage, it sounds like that's not something that's relevant to you on this application.
Is that a question?
It was a question.
Okay, uh, I'm going to rely on the, the petition that was filed and the request for the variance and assume it's accurate.
So, can I ask you one other question if, if indeed, as indicated by the application that currently existing conditions are 19% lot coverage, and we have no explanation as to how the, um, project went from 14.5% to 19%, um, is it your opinion as an expert that this applicant would need to seek what we call as-built relief for what exists on the property now?
Well, I think that's a legal question for you guys. That's beyond my scope.
Um, as part of your analysis, did you, um, take a look at what impacts the placement of this pool in the backyard would have on a budding property owners?
Uh, I stood in the deck, I stood in the backyard, and I certainly considered the neighbors as far as impact, yes, sir.
Okay, and what was your analysis as to what impact this would have on the Schmalz, uh, this, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Schmalz at 468 Purgatory Road?
I don't think there'd be any impact.
You don't think that there'd be any impact on their privacy?
No, sir.
And what led you to that conclusion?
My 31 years of experience.
So, uh, the placement of this pool, uh, within close proximity of the rear property line, which, uh, the applicant's real rear property line, which faces my client's property, which is downhill, um, what kind of impact on the property value would that have on my client's property?
I don't believe there'd be any impact.
And, could you, um, strike that? You know what, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to, I, I have no other questions of Mr. Godfrey.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Uh, if you can release the screen share, Mr. Jackson, and we'll go back to Mr. Martland. Mr. Martland, if you have no other questions, I'd like to open it up to my board to see if they have any questions for the applicant or the expert witnesses.
I, I've got nothing further.
Uh, is there anyone on the board that would like to ask a question, either the applicant or any expert testimony that we've heard tonight?
Hey Jim, this is Tom. Yeah, I would, uh, I would like to zero in on that question there because I reviewed all the paperwork, and my concern was not about, uh, the application as filed, but the documentation that was just provided that showed a similar plan with a different percentage lot coverage. And, and I don't understand the discrepancy there either because that gave me the impression that there was an error committed somewhere, and I think maybe more than a mere math error. So, it left me with the impression that the builder overbuilt or built with permission, I don't know which, you know, he could have gotten permission during the building process, but I don't see that in the packet. But I do know that in terms of the way the application is filed, they are over lot coverage already based on just the house. And we've seen this quite a bit in this area, and again, it's no fault of the Saloms that the house they purchased was over, but that's my main question is, how could we have one set of documentation and paperwork that says the lot coverage is 14.5, and as part of this application, it's 19%?
Mr. Heaney, I'm going to ask Mr., I'm going to ask Mr. Regan to address that, and, and do we have any, any obligation to go back and check that, Mr. Regan?
Well, you know, certainly, um, the, the threshold question is making sure, number one, that the proper relief has been requested and that the proper, um, notice has gone out in, in terms of what is being asked for in terms of the variance. Is it a variance from 15% to 22? Is it a variance from some other number, uh, and making sure that that's accurate? Um, my assumption is, uh, because I think you'd have it in the file, that there was no other, uh, request for relief that allowed the house to be, to use Mr. Heaney's words, overbuilt, um, you know, to 19% versus the 15%. And, you know, counsel can correct me if, if they're aware of anything along those lines. Uh, but, um, so, I think the, the first question is, is do we have a, an application that's, uh, been properly, asked for the proper relief and has been, uh, you know, properly noticed and advertised, I suppose.
Mr. Martland, do you have a response to that?
Yeah, I think that we certainly have an application that's been, uh, appropriately advertised. We're, we're seeking to increase the lot coverage, uh, originally for the deck and the, um, and the, the pool, uh, I indicated, uh, in the application that the existing lot coverage was 19%. That's, that's what our architect, our landscape architect determined. They went out, they measured, they said, look, this is 19%. Um, you know, we've included that on, on the plan to indicate that there, there's 19% lot coverage. Uh, my clients purchased the property, um, with that condition. Um, and so, we've submitted that application for the, the block coverage, um, variance. We indicated that if it is granted, the, the lot coverage would be 22%, um, where 15% is allowed. So, I think, uh, certainly from, from that standpoint, uh, there's, um, uh, it's appropriately advertised, um, and, uh, there's appropriate notice. Um, the, the, the Northeast plan that was submitted is a, a plan that is a survey, uh, plan showing the, uh, the lot lines of the property upon which the, um, the landscape architect's plan is based. So, um, that's why, um, that plan was submitted. Um, the, the landscape architect used that as the base plan. Um, they went then, they went forward and calculated, uh, lot coverages, they understood it, um, and, um, indicate that it's 19%. Um, you know, and I, I, I believe that to be accurate. Um, so that the, the existing lot coverage on this property is, is 19%.
Mr. Costa, do we have to, uh, do we have to look into why the Northeast plan from the as-built to now is different? Is that just a, a mistake when they built it? Because when I looked at the plans, they looked materially the same. The building looks the same. I don't see any added structures.
I don't know if it's a typo, or, you know, like I said, how they come about, you know, it could be as, uh, how they calculated their square footage. You know, it's, the, the plan to me is, uh, going to, going to concern lot coverage without any other relief. I, I feel it was applied for properly. Um, if you want to get the two engineers together to find out when to have different numbers, so be it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Costa.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, uh, I would just, I, I think, uh, it appears that, uh, you know, from a threshold issue, that, that the proper relief's been requested and the advertisement is correct if it's, uh, indicating it's a change of 19% to 22%. And the board just needs to be mindful of the fact that it is, um, of what the actual numbers are, and, and that's what's in front of you, why that's what's in the record tonight is that the existing lot coverage is 19, and this is a request to take it up to 22.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. I'm inclined to agree with your, your assessment.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a quick comment on this topic. The, the, the reason why I, I bring it up is, is, and it was less about notice because I don't disagree with, uh, Mr. Regan's comments or Mr. Martin's comments in terms of whether the advertisement was sufficient. Um, I think it was more, uh, to bring to the board's attention that there's been no expert testimony offered so far by the applicant to reconcile these differences, and these are the plans that the applicant submitted, number one. And number two, this is not a scenario where, um, you know, the property has existed for 50 years, and if you will, it, the, the existing structure predated the modern zoning code. This structure was just built. Um, and, you know, now, uh, it's somewhat, um, you know, disingenuous to come to the table now and say, we didn't know anything about it, we didn't look into it, we don't know, we just bought the house. And they're tacking on additional lot coverage to, uh, lot coverage that was never, um, properly granted before. Unless an engineer could testify, or there's some evidence that would reconcile these differing numbers, I think this is a, this is a valid point to be under consideration by the board as you examine this request for dimensional relief.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other questions on the board for any of the experts, for Mr. Martland?
Yeah, question for Mr. Jackson. Did your client that hired you ever point out that they thought there was a lot coverage discrepancy within the original plans, or was this something that just surfaced?
This is, this is a discussion I've had over the last couple of weeks with my client as we've gone through the plans, yeah. But we have no, we have no information other than what's been submitted, uh, as part of the application and what we reviewed in terms of reviewing the application in anticipation of a hearing.
Mr. Jackson, I just have a question for you because part of it is, I, I, I have the code up on the other screen, but it's prior acts of the existing owner. And so, whether the house was built 100 years ago, 20 years ago, or two years ago, they bought a house that's in an R, R40 zone, and it's only a 20,000 square foot lot. So, it's not a prior act of the owner that built the house on the lot. They purchased it, and they, they're subject to the zoning that's there. So, they have to ask for this relief under the existing zoning. Am I correct in assuming that? I'm a layperson, so I, you know.
Uh, I would, I understand your analysis of that, and, uh...
I actually read this on your, on your firm's website, by the way, about the difference between new construction and existing construction. So, if you want, I can pull it up and read it verbatim from your site, but one of the questions there is the threshold and the standard that should be applied based on new construction where the applicant is, and we'll have another case later tonight where it's going to be exactly that, new construction in a substandard lot. But in this case, the applicant, the petitioner bought a house, they didn't build the house, now they're left with the demise. They didn't buy the 14% house, they bought the 19% house because they measured it, they paid for their own engineer to come in and do it, but the threshold goes from that standard, correct? Not, you know, it, it doesn't matter when it was built. It's irrelevant. It's, it's, did they build it new or was it used? Was it existing? And when they bought it, it was an existing building.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think you, you honed in on it. The question is, is really whether or not, uh, um, the existing conditions are the result of prior actions of the applicant.
Correct.
Versus, uh, somebody else, uh, earlier in the chain of title.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Uh, any other questions for anyone here tonight? Uh, seeing that we have no questions for any of the experts or any of the board, I'd like to, at this point, open it up to public comment. Is there anyone on the?
Chairman, I think Mr. Jackson may have some witnesses he wants to...
Okay. Mr. Jackson, you still have witnesses?
I have Mr. Schmalz who'd like to testify, yes.
Okay, let's wear him in. Mr. Schmalz, I see that you're there. If you can take, if you can come off of mute, hey, good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Can you raise your right hand, please? You swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record.
Dana Schmalz. Uh, my address is 44 Brimmer Street, Boston, Massachusetts, and our address in Middletown is 468 Purgatory Road.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Dana, how long have you been at, uh, 468 Purgatory Road?
Uh, we've been there approximately seven years, six, seven years, I think.
Okay. So, you, you were there, um, you know, as the property at 444 Purgatory Lane changed hands and got redeveloped, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, when that property was redeveloped, um, there was some zoning relief requested for that property so that the prior house could be torn down and a new house constructed, is that right?
Yes.
And do you recall what that zoning relief was?
Yeah, the old house, and, and I don't know if anyone on the committee has, again, been to the property, but the, the old house was, uh, it was a single-story house that, uh, covered about eight and a half percent of the lot coverage according to the documents. And, um, it was built to, to 43 feet within our property line. Uh, and so, when they came, when they put out, uh, they came to you, the board, um, they were going to tear down that house, they didn't, um, explain exactly what they were going to build, uh, but they, uh, they asked us to waive the, or not to object to the being within the 60-foot barrier to our house.
Right, so, in essence, the, the structure was encroaching into the rear setback, correct?
Correct. So, about 25% or so.
Okay. Bringing the house a little closer to your property.
Uh, 25% substantial.
Okay. So, but you didn't object to that at the time, right?
No.
And so, after the project was completed, what was your impression of the house that was built at 444 Purgatory Lane?
Uh, we, we were surprised. Um, it was not what was conveyed to us verbally at the time. Uh, it's a much larger house. Um, it's three stories. Uh, the building permit stated it was... Uh, the building permit stated it was for four, it was a four-bedroom house. Um, I think it was for thirty-six hundred square feet of livable space. Um, it was sold to the Salem's as a five-bedroom house, I believe. Um, with over forty, I think it, well, now it's on the tax records for, I think, forty-four thousand five hundred. Um, livable square feet. Um, I I I don't know. We haven't had an expert come in to see if it maintained the thirty-five-foot height restriction. Um, but we were surprised to learn about the lot coverage. Uh, going from what we thought was going to be per code, per the code of the town. To something that was forty-five percent of beyond the code of the town.
Oh, when did you first learn about the current application for the installation of a deck and a pool?
Yeah, that that's something I I I do want to correct because I learned about that from the letter that the zoning board sent out. It was sent to my house. I read the letter. It was a Saturday. Uh, it was when I opened the letter because I had been traveling, so it'd been sent out. I don't, you you all have the date. Mr. Salem did not reach out to me before that. I learned about it from the town zoning.
So did you have subsequent conversations with Mr. Salem about this project?
I I did. Um, we had, we've had a few conversations about it. Um, and, you know, again, we're happy that they're neighbors and we're happy that uh that that they bought the house. Uh, but we did say, we we brought them up to speed on the history of the house being. The way it was constructed and being much larger than, well, I think the original building plans that the board approved and what we thought. And uh, that we, it's a, it's a big house for a small lot. And we, we raised our concern that way.
So. Aside from um the conversations you've had, you've had with Mr. Salem, you've also had time to collect your thoughts and. Um, sort of uh organize the concerns you've got regarding the installation of the pool as proposed. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, no, I mean, I.
Dana, why don't you just go ahead and and tell the board what your concerns are with this current project?
Sure, sure. Well, I mean, again, I think it it's hard to look at this project. And and Russ tried to show the slope of the of the property in some pictures. But I I really think you need to walk the property to understand the slope. Because e- even in the, even in the plans that submitted. Though where the pool would be is not flat as a pancake, as Mr. Salem said. The plans as submitted show a two-feet, two-foot drop, and I think it drops another two more feet after that. So it's not a flat area at all, and I would encourage the the zoning uh commission to to walk it and and see that. And we'll obviously have e- experts to do it as well. So um. The house is substantially, you saw the picture that that Russ put up. It's a three-story house. It's very large that the elevation of that property is somewhere between twelve and fifteen feet. Above our lot. And so that that the house looks directly into our property. And we can see the house from from uh bedroom windows and the like. So it's a very large house. It surprised us that somehow it went from the approved, what the zoning board approved. At fourteen and a half percent lock coverage to nineteen percent. I I don't know how that happens, um, but it did. Um, the the other thing is that when the, and and you can see this in the plans that were submitted. Um, Helen Menkes, who built the house, had the engineers come and put together a construction plan on the drainage. And if you look at pictures of the previous house, they had a pond, a drainage pond in the backyard, in the middle of that backyard. And when, and they also had trees around the lot. Um, the, when she built the house, the Salem's house now is clear-cut around the lot completely. So there are no trees, no vegetation. Um, and the drainage pits were put in to try to alleviate the stormwater runoff. Um, a- and and unfortunately, that has not worked. Because now, since the construction of the house, we've had to put in water retain, rich, water retaining walls. In the basements of both of our structures. We've had uh moisture issues in the structures. We've had to put some pumps in the structures and there are French drains in the lawn. Where even to this day, part of the law, our lawn cannot be walked on because it's a soupy mess.
So Dana, Dana, just to interrupt, I want to make clear what you're describing in terms of the water remediation issues. That you've had to undertake on your property, that is uh from your estimation, the result of the new construction at four forty-four Purgatory?
Yeah, it did. I mean, it didn't happen before that. And I mean, we.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna object that Mr. Schmaltz isn't uh an engineer, just for the record.
He he's not offering tech, technical testimony. He's describing the conditions that exist in his own home.
That, that's fine.
Go ahead, Mr. Jackson.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dana.
So, I mean, look, we we built a new pool house for the code where we 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 lived up to all the codes. We built a new pool house, which wa- was brand new. And until the kid, the 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 four forty-four, the new house at four forty-four Purgatory Lane was built. We had no moisture problems there, in the basement there. Now we do. So we had to put in that extra expense of of doing that. And still, we put in French drains and the, you can come to the house and see the pipe of the French drain dripping well after rain. Has happened. And this goes, you know, right down from us. We left the fields in front of our house as fields. We didn't develop those, but all this goes right down to Second Beach. So all that water that's coming down is 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 hitting our property and continuing to flow down.
And what are your concerns regarding drainage if if this pool is constructed?
I I mean, un- unfortunately, you know, plans are, the best-laid plans sometimes don't work. And I mean, the the plans that were submitted for the house, the construction of the house. I mean, they're detailed. You you, I think the committee has those, I know the committee has those plans because they were, it was submitted with the Salem's application. And unfortunately, they didn't work. So we, I mean, the, and if you could go back to the, some of the pictures. We have a, we have a stone wall for, on the edge of our driveway, right below the Salem's property. And that stone wall leaks water, and sometimes on a heavy rainstorm, water actually shoots out of it.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I, can I share those pictures again?
Uh, sure.
Just, it'll just take me a second, sorry. So, um. Dana, I wanna. Okay, so this, is this, is this aerial good? The stone wall you were describing is down here?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, you can come and see after, after any kind of rain, those stones will be wet from water draining down from the property.
And so obviously, your concern is with the increase of impervious surface on four forty-four Purgatory. It's going to create additional problems for you?
A- a- again, as as Mr. Minkl brought up, I'm not an engineer, but I mean, I I have read the reports and. Creating that kind of impervious square footage in in the, in the report that's been submitted. I think there's a stat in there that says that for every one square foot of impervious structure. That is put into the property, you need to replace it with eighty square feet of six-to-eight-inch. Grass. And there's not that space on this, on the lot, on the Salem's lot to do that. So I I I don't know where that's going to be, and maybe an engineer can come up with a plan that says it might work. But the the existing plan doesn't work, so I I, you know, I I I, I I don't know what to say.
So, Dana, what about um, you know, Mr. Salem testified that, you know, um. You wouldn't be able to see the pool. Um, wh- what's, what's the view from your property into the backyard area of the Salem's property?
Well, I mean, you, we look right up into it because of the slope of the elevation. And a pool fifteen feet from our property line in the back. That's above our property line because I I I don't know how you build a pool if there is elevation there that doesn't have any kind of retaining wall. I I don't, I don't know how we're not going to see that. And and look, there is a privet there and and, but, you know, privet isn't, isn't all, you can see through privet. It's it's not thick. Um, the privet on the left is thicker than the privet on the right, which is lower, as you can see. And you can see the far part of the property. We don't have any, anything there. So you will be able to see the pool. I believe you'll be able to see the pool. I mean, again, I can't say it hasn't been built. So, and I don't understand, I don't understand the side view that's being proposed of the pool with the slope of this lot. I I just, I can't visualize that not being a retaining wall when, if you walk the lot. Or you live it like I do and look up, it's gonna, it's gonna be right there.
So what kind of impact is that going to have on on you and the use and enjoyment of your property?
Well, I look, the, I mean, again, we 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 are happy that the Salem's enjoy their house. And it's a, it's a, it's a big house on a small lot, um, bigger than it should be. Uh, the, as as Mr. Salem said, they they spend uh almost all their living, their ti- their living time. I think, yeah, he said, when the weather is good on the decks. Um, basically, they said, he said, we basically live on the deck. Because of the, of the slope, we can hear conversations. Um, I mean, direct conversations, and when they have guests over, we 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 hear that. And that's just being part of the neighbor, which we understand. But, I mean, it it it, it's so much bigger than the previous house that, I mean, i- it's it's hard not to. Hear or see it. And quite honestly, my daughters are embarrassed to to be in bathing suits. Because the house is looking right down on them.
So in essence, your concern is that, aside from the existing conditions which exist and they're not going to change. Your, your concern is that the installation of the pool is going to exacerbate those conditions?
I I I don't see how it couldn't um make it less private. Um, or I I just don't understand how the, the thought process could go that it wouldn't impact our property.
I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Mr. Schmaltz or Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Schmaltz. When, when your house was built, uh, how long after your house was built was your neighbor's house built? And were you aware that there was going to be another house built up on the hill above you?
No, we were not aware um that another house. When we, when we bought the property and we did our house, and again, our house was built in nineteen twenty-nine. And 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 we, we renovated it inside um and built the pool house. Uh, we had no idea that uh, that that was going to be done because the permits weren't filed till December fifteenth. And and Ms. uh, Ms. Menkes never told us about it.
Yeah, the 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 other question I had for you is, when, when did you become concerned about the lot coverage of the house above you? Was it right after it was built? And if it was, why didn't you take action at that point?
Quite honestly, I didn't understand the lot coverage there, and I became more aware of the lot cu- I could, look, I could see the size of the house. But I I didn't understand the lot coverage ruling. I, and my, my mistake was not to go and spend a day reading the code like I did. After I got the letter from the zoning board about the Salem's application for the pool. That's when I really figured it out.
I I I guess what I'm trying to do as a board member is is weigh in your testimony and try to make an educated decision about. Whether you're upset with the pool or the size of the house above you.
Yeah, sure. No, I I think, I think the pool would dramatically impact our privacy.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Schmaltz or Mr. Jackson?
Can I say anything else?
Sure.
Thank you. I mean, I I I, I'm, I'm coming at this as a, as a layperson like all of you. And um, I I I'm understanding the 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 codes of uh, and kind of the due process. Of the incrementalism here. Um, and and I went back and I I I looked at the variance that we didn't object to in two thousand fifteen. And, you know, that they were, there were like a number of tenants in that variance, which you you all must have seen. I don't, I guess we should submit it, but um, I mean, the variance, if you read it, was to construct a new home. That's more conducive to first-floor living as the applicant was getting older and wanted wheelchair access and living. Um, they said the variance would not significantly diminish the property values in the surrounding area. The variance asked that uh, the decision.
I'm gonna object to the, to to this. I mean, this is irrelevant to the pending matter before the board.
I, I, Mr. Schmaltz, I I agree with Mr. Martin, only because the, the. The current applicant didn't build the house, and I understand everything you're saying and I agree with you. But uh, they, they, the Salem's didn't build the house. They bought the house built.
And I, and I understand. I guess my question for the, for the board would be, when does it end then? Um, when, so if the, if the Salem sell their house, which, I mean, Mr. Salem in our conversation. Has said they have done a lot of plans. They are talking about, they talked about potentially putting the hot tub on the roof. Or potentially building a widow's walk, or now that, I guess the plans are to build the master bedroom, the sixth bedroom for this house. The sixth bedroom for this house over the garage. Um, a- and at some point, um.
Again, I'm going to object. You seem to be veering off of the, the issue of the, the petition before the board.
Well, I.
It's a valid question, Mr. Schmaltz, and and I guess the only thing I can answer is anywhere they build on that house. Because they're in, they're, they're not in, they're not in compliance with the rear setback. Because of the release that was given on the last, when they built it, they'll have to come before the board every time that they build anything. What, and anything they build on the, on, on top of the structure has to meet with the height restrictions. So that would all be covered under the zoning code, and then they'd have to come back before the board.
Okay. And and I would like to correct one other thing that, though, that um was said was. That the pool was made smaller. Um, I don't know if that's accurate because the pool was made smaller. But the addition of the hot tub actually increased the area. That is being sought for variance. It didn't de, so it didn't decrease that area. So I I just, I think you need to look at the numbers there because to me, the numbers look like it actually increased the size of the pool with, with the addition of the hot tub.
Thank you, Mr. Schmaltz.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to uh ask any questions?
Hey, Jim, I gotta, just one more thing, since we're, since we're almost two hours into this right now, we might as well exhaust everything. What um kind of drainage plan is submitted with a swimming pool? And is there any possible way that we could try to ameliorate the situation down below at all during this pool building process? By having these two homeowners work together is is, I I'm just curious, if there really is a problem. We don't want to exacerbate that. What what goes into the planning of a pool? I'm sure there's a drainage plan. Should, should something else be looked at at the same time so that this thing is right?
I'm going to direct that to Mr. Costa if he's available.
We have professional, our engineers look at it and we rely on a lot of the professionals. If you live downhill, no matter where you live, whenever we design, it's zero increase in drainage. And every plan I approve is stamped by a professional engineer that allows zero increase. It's been that way for, I've been around fifteen years here.
So, Mr. Costa, the Salem's are going to have to comply with the stormwater management of the town.
Absolutely, but they're not going to correct any down-slope problems. They just cannot increase concentrate or add any extra drainage off the property. What runs off, runs off.
So the concern of the impervious system surfaces, th- they're going to have to mitigate. If that is in, in fact true, that it's going to increase runoff, then they've got to mitigate that runoff.
They will mitigate that runoff if they get the approval and they.
If they get the approval.
And Mr. Chairman, just, just to throw, to follow up on that, um. You know, if if there, i- there is a possibility that the town engineer can look at the. You know, if if part of the problem is a result of a drainage system that is designed for a smaller house. Uh, you know, one that had fourteen and a half percent lock coverage versus the existing nineteen percent. Uh, it it may be possible for the uh, a town engineer, when they review this, if if a pool is built. To uh make sure that um, the property is brought into compliance with what it should have been. If, if in fact there is uh excess runoff based on the size of the house.
Thank you, Mr. Regan.
And and if I could just uh jump in on that, Mr. Chairman, and and I would, I would tell the board. You know, my clients are fully amenable to having the town engineer, uh, and Mr. Costa. You know, my clients are fully amenable to having the town engineer uh and Mr. Costa review. The 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 current drainage system um and the impact it would have. Because they they don't want to cause any negative impact uh to to the butter. You know, they they're neighbors, they they don't want to see that. Um, and if if there is a problem with the current system, um, then we would certainly be amenable to reviewing that. And making any corrections and mitigation efforts that would need to be done. Um, the 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 system itself, according to the plans, um, you know, just so the board is aware. It that that system um where the the two um uh detention areas are. Where the rock gardens are located, those take all the runoff from the roof. Um, so the the all the roof leaders go to those two areas. So you you don't, for this, for the size of the house, that is not sheet flowing over to to the Schmaltzes. Additionally, th- there is uh pervious uh pavement or um pavers at the front of the property. Uh, just having gone over there the other day and looking at the property. Yeah, I I understand that, you know, Mr. Schmaltz may be, um, you know, negatively impacted by by runoff. But there's, you know, hundreds of acres, it would seem, that drains in uh across. These properties and to the Schmaltzes, I mean, from St. George's all the all the way down from that hill. The my client's property is a relatively small property, only um half an acre here. But there are, you know, literally, you know, hundred acres uh in that catchment area that are draining this way. So, you know, my client is certainly amenable to um meeting all of those requirements. And doing what they can to uh make sure that they don't negatively impact um Mr. Schmaltz and uh and his wife. From from a drainage perspective.
Thank you, David. Uh, if there's no other questions for Mr. Martlin, Mr. Schmaltz.
I've got a question.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Hey, Mr. Marlin, you brought brought up something I was thinking about, and that was the driveway. He has quite a large driveway that is Mr. Salem has quite a large driveway. Are you saying that the larger portion, or at least the equal portion of the stone area is semi-permeable?
Yeah, um, so let me.
I can answer that, David, if you'd like.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, the entire the entire driveway is permeable. It's crushed down on one side and it's uh and it's pavers on the other, so it was designed that way to be um the entire driveways.
Thank you.
Okay, if if I can, I'd like to open it up to the public to comment if there's anyone out. Uh, Angela, is there anyone raising their hand to comment on this from the public?
I do not see anybody raising a hand, no.
Okay, seeing no public comment, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and anything.
I'm sorry, before you do that, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Uh, just wanted to confirm whether or not there are any other letters of uh uh from neighbors uh in relation to this. And if so, if they could also be uh submitted as exhibits.
Uh, in my file that I'm looking at right now, I have read the only letter that is there.
Okay.
The only letter was from uh Mr. John Hayes. There is a letter uh from you, Mr. Jackson, and there's a letter from Mr. Martin on scheduling. And that is that is all the letters that we've we've received.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there is one hand that went up right when you said you were going to close it. Did you want to hear that?
Absolutely.
Okay, one moment. Should I talk?
Josie, raise your right hand, please.
It's raised.
Do you swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Um, Josie Rock, twenty-nine Sherwood Road, Middletown.
And are you on a, are you within the two hundred feet of?
No, no, no.
And I ask that you you keep your comments brief, but I I certainly welcome them.
Okay, it's just one thing. Um, I think when um Mr. Martlin spoke about St. George's and um that having drainage. Um, going down, um, there's all, there are many, there are two fields that collect a lot of that rainwater, actually three where the birdhouses are. And I don't think that St. George's impacts any homes below them like this home might do. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Josie. Angela, let's just give it one more time. Is there anyone else on on the line that would like to speak either for against the petition?
I don't see any hands.
Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, can I have a motion to accept the petition as presented?
No, we have to amend it, Jim. It has written it has the deck in it.
Oh, it does, that's correct. So we're going to have to amend the petition. So uh make your motion uh respective of the pool, the amended proposal.
Motion to approve the amended proposal.
Merit was made by Chris Souza. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Who's that? Tommy?
Tom Silver.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Discussion.
No problem.
Discussion, and if you're an alternate, please chime in. I know you're not voting, but your opinion is valuable.
Yeah, I I I mean, I was, this is Chris Souza. I was I was a hundred percent in the Salem camp until I heard Mr. Schmaltz's concerns about the drainage. Um, I I do believe that um they met the criterion for variance. That's the first thing. Um, we we went through all five of them enough during the testimony that I don't have to read them into the record. But they were all satisfied and I I generally agreed with the the expert witnesses on how they justified the variance. Um, what I would say on a personal level and not to try to get a nice guy award in the town is that it's it's. It's just upsetting when you see neighbors that just moved next to each other that that are starting off on the on the the wrong foot. And and I would hope that if this gets approved, that they can work together to uh possibly create a better situation. Or possibly even improve the drainage situation for Mr. Schmaltz, uh, you know, downgrade. That's it.
Thank you, Chris.
I have to agree with Chris. I mean, after all I've heard, it's a it's a difficult situation in terms of. How the two lots um possibly impact one another. And I and I select the word possibly because I'm not convinced it can be limited. The impact on Mr. Schmaltz's lot can be limited to the effects from uh Mr. Salem's lot. But having said that, I agree, I think he's met the standard for the variance.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Granville?
Yeah, the uh, they've met the uh the criteria of the uh of the. Yeah, petition. Um, I like the fact that uh it isn't a record that that zero increase in the runoff. And the willingness of the petition to work with the neighbor uh to hopefully uh make a bad situation better. Um, so I agree with my colleagues on the uh petition.
Thank you, Mr. Granville. Mr. Silveira?
I'm also going to vote in favor of it for the reasons that have been stated.
Thank you, Mr. Silveira. Uh, any of the alternates want to give their opinion before I finalize everything? I guess not. Mr. Hantoon, uh, go for it. Nope. Okay, uh. I did a lot of research on the whole variance versus new construction versus existing. I agree, I agree, and I'm concerned that that there's two different lot lot uh coverage calculations. But the calculation that we were given was the more conservative, it's actually larger, so it's. It's there's, if if it was the opposite, it would be an automatic turn down. In other words, if if the plan from when they built it said nineteen and we were seeing fourteen now. I would have my concern that there was something going on with the with with the petitioner. And uh and that was that was leading me to want to further investigate it. I, you know, it's a difficult point, but it's, the the relief is, is it the minimal relief necessary? Uh, you you know, it's a twenty thousand lot, square foot lot in a forty thousand square foot zone. And, you know, the the rear yard setback that was given when it was built. Uh, it's sitting exactly on the front yard setback at about forty-one feet where forty is required. So they didn't have a lot of latitude of where the house was going to go on the lot. I am concerned, as Mr. Schmaltz pointed out, that things change after they're built. And uh if this was, I wrote her name down, if this was Mrs. Mankey's before us, there'd be no pool going in. Because it was her action that created the lot and created the house. But the Salem's didn't have that, they they didn't come before us and and sell the board a bill of goods and then build a bigger house. They bought a house that was existing and, you know, I've I've read the the variance and I I too am going to support it. And so with that, I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We've now used about half of our allotted time. I'd like to call for a short uh ten minute break. So we can re regroup and stretch. Uh, the mind can only absorb what the hind can absorb. Endure, endure. So we'll see you back here at eight, eight, ten, which is eight minutes.
Enjoy your pool.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and effort. Thank you.
Although I am here and I'll be monitoring to see when you stop.
Thank you, Nancy. Peter, just let us know when you're back in the hot seat.
I am here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Mr. Heaney, can you read the case for us? I see, Mr. Heaney. I might be.
I'm here, Jim. I'm here.
There you are, Tom. Thank you.
Petition of Christine M. Zekus owner by her attorney Jay Russell Jackson Esquire for a variance from sections six oh three and seven oh one to allow the construction of a three thousand and nine foot uh square foot, single family dwelling and a twenty by thirty pool with a northern yard setback of eight feet and a southern yard setback of twelve feet where fifteen is required is resulting in lot coverage of thirty point five percent where twenty five percent is allowed. Said real estate is located at one seventy two Austin Avenue and further identified as lots twenty eight A and thirty eight A on Tax Assessor's Platt, one sixteen northeast.
Mr. Jackson, would you like to tell us about the petition?
Uh yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um so this property at one seventy two Alston Avenue uh was recently acquired by my client is a vacant parcel of land, which originally actually was comprised of two separate small lots. Uh my client has actually already just completed an administrative subdivision to merge those lots. And the resulting land area is six thousand eight hundred and seventy eight square feet. Um it's still obviously quite substandard uh for the R ten zone. Uh the lot is only fifty feet wide. So we're before you this evening with a proposal requesting dimensional variances so that a single family residence could be constructed, which uh will encroach into the two side setbacks again by virtue of the fact that the lot is so narrow and will also um uh have a total lot coverage between the residence and the proposed accessory structure, the pool in the backyard at thirty point five percent. I have with me this evening uh the applicant Kristen Zekus, so she'll testify briefly about the application. Uh we also have the architect Greg Yalanis available uh to testify briefly and answer questions. And then we have our real estate expert, uh Mr. James Hul.
Okay, Miss Zekus, can you raise your right hand for me? You're on mute. Okay, great. Do you swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Kristen Zekus, eleven eighty two Broadway, New York, New York.
Okay, thank you.
So Kristen, as you just indicated, you are um currently a uh your primary residence is in Manhattan. Is that correct? And when did you acquire the property uh at one seventy two Alston Avenue?
Um I closed on the property at the end of September of this year.
Of uh twenty twenty?
Uh I'm sorry, yes, twenty twenty.
Okay. And uh how did you know about this neighborhood or what brought you to this neighborhood?
Of course. Um so I've I've actually been coming um to the Newport Middletown area in the summers since I was about five years old. Um I used to live in Boston at the time. That's where I grew up. Um and my my mother and her long term partner um of I I guess just under thirty years now, um her her partner, Peter Stunhouse, actually acquired a a house on Alston Avenue at one fifty Alston Ave. Um I think it was in two thousand and six. Um so I've I've been coming to the neighborhood, um visiting his house, staying with him during the summers um for, I guess, almost the past fifteen years now. Um and you know, over the past number of years, uh since I've I've lived in New York and haven't gotten to see my family as much, um I've, you know, of course, really enjoyed going up there to see them um and and have been kind of keeping my eye out for um any properties in the area and uh during the time I was I was actually, um I moved to Middletown from um May of twenty twenty through October during the COVID period when I was working from home. Um we spent, we spent a lot of time looking and and in the neighborhood and actually um found that the owner of the the land, who's currently the resident of one seventy four Alston, was um who had acquired the land a couple of years prior, was actually selling off the land. So so to me, it it was actually the best opportunity to be able to to build a house just down the street from my family. Um and kind of, you know, hopefully get what I wanted and what I was looking for and and, you know, be in the neighborhood that I had kind of spent the the past fifteen years visiting.
Okay, so so your mom is still living on the street on Alston Avenue, correct?
Um it's it's their second residence.
Right.
Um but yes, a- as a second residence, she she and her partner are um are spending the the summers at one fifty Alston Avenue.
So um what is your intention with uh the development of this property? Is this going to be your a second home for you as well?
Yeah, my intention is is for it to be a second home. Um hopefully, a a second home that I can grow into and and have um for a very long time. Um it's uh, you know, somewhere that I I I plan to visit um and and yeah, you know, an escape from from the city.
Okay, but this is clearly something that you intend to use for your own use, correct?
One hundred percent, yes.
This isn't, you're not building this property so that you can do nightly rental rentals or Airbnb or anything like that?
No, absolutely not.
No, and you've you're and we'll talk a little bit about the design, but the generally you've designed this house so that you can it'll accommodate yourself and hopefully a growing family in the years to come. Is that fair to say?
Exactly.
So when you first found this lot and you discussed with the um the previous owner, they still own property at one seventy four Alston, is that right?
Yep.
All right. And there were discussions uh before you purchased about generally what your plans were in terms of developing this property, correct?
Correct.
And the Abutter to the North is agreeable to your um development plans, which includes the size of the house, the fact that it it crouches into the setback closest to them, uh and the fact that you've got a pool in the backyard. That that's all, those are all things that were discussed with the Abutter to the North, right?
That's correct.
And to your knowledge, that Abutter actually submitted a letter to the uh to the board supporting your application?
That's correct.
Okay, so after you acquired the property and you had these general discussions with the Abutter to the North, um you engaged an architect for the project, right?
Correct.
So why don't you just discuss briefly what that process was like and what what were the things that you identified um as important as you uh propose this development?
Of course. Um so you know, we we kind of discussed the the size and and the shape of the land um and kind of what, you know, what was the minimum amount of space that um I guess was uh necessary to accomplish um a a second family home that I could grow into and and use. Um and so uh, you know, we we sought out to build a four bedroom house over two stories um because uh I had agreed with the um the owner of one seventy four Alston that I would not uh build above his roof line. Um so so we thought that uh the best approach would be to, you know, to honor that um height restriction and uh build the house over two stories where we would um look to fit uh what we've planned as a four bedroom house. Um one of the bedrooms, the plan is is for that to actually be a a working office, but um you know, be on the ground floor so that uh you know, when when if if or when the time comes and um you know, whether either someone my mother or my family um is is older and needs to be in in a ground bedroom, or I do, um have have that be accessible, but um have one of the bedrooms act as as an office and then have um three, three full bedrooms. Uh I apologize, my Zoom just cut out. Um as well. And then um, you know, also add the uh the pool in in the back as well. So those are kind of what we were looking to accomplish. We weren't looking to have any oversized grand bedrooms or or anything, but just looking to fit um that into a a reasonable floor plan.
So um I'm just going to briefly discuss uh the pool as well. Now, you're, I don't know if you were watching the previous petition, but I'm sure the boards had plenty to hear about pools, but just quickly, the backyard at one seventy two Alston, it's it's, you know, the grade is relatively level, right, with your abutters?
That's correct.
Okay, and and because it's a sort of a long, narrow lot, you've got the ability to keep the backyard and pool area private. Um is that fair to say? So you
Correct.
You'll be able to buffer uh whatever impact you may have on neighbors uh by the construction of fencing or vegetative buffers, things of that nature, to lessen whatever impact of this accessory use. Is that is that a fair description?
Uh that is correct. There's there's already a privet in place um along the uh border to the south and to the east, and then there's a fence in place uh on the border to the north.
Okay. And so also, um in terms of preparing for this hearing, we discussed the fact that the you know, the footprint of the house is fifteen hundred square feet. And so that's actually below the twenty five percent lot coverage requirement. So in essence, the total development in terms of going above the twenty five percent is driven in large part by the pool, correct?
Correct.
And you are agreeable that if the board um sees fit to grant the relief that you're requesting, that you would uh be agreeable to a condition such that any lot coverage uh above twenty five percent attributable to the pool, uh you would agree not to utilize for the construction of any structure or anything like that without coming back before this board for additional zoning relief. Is that fair?
Of course. I have no intention of doing that.
Right. So in other words, you're not interested in getting permission to cover thirty percent of the lot and then expanding the size of the house or constructing some other um, you know, structure above grade or anything like that, correct?
Correct. Absolutely not.
All right. Um and you feel as though by going through the process with your architect, you've come to the point where what you're asking for is the least relief necessary for the reasonable use and enjoyment of your property?
That's correct.
Okay. Um I have no other questions right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do you have any experts you'd like to put on, Mr. Jackson?
I don't know if the any of the board members have questions of Miss Zekus. If not, I can bring on the architect.
Would anyone like to question the applicant? I don't think we have any questions yet, Mr. Jackson.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I'd like to call the architect Greg Yalanis.
Okay. Mr. Yalanis, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Uh Greg Yalanis, two oh three Goddard Row, Newport, Rhode Island.
Okay, tell us about the design.
Um I think Kristen uh summed it up fairly well. It's a a modestly scaled three to four bedroom home. Um we designed it to be two stories in height, um as she mentioned, to um maintain a lower roof profile um and uh in agreement with the neighbors. And when citing the building, um we want it to be sensitive to the setbacks as much as possible, uh adhering to the front yard setback, as you can see on the site plan. And then also uh to the rear yard uh with the placement of the pool, we've also pulled the um edge of the pool uh to to meet the rear yard setback requirements according to zoning. Um you know, in order to have a a home that has living spaces by modern standard, uh we needed a certain amount of area inside the house. I feel that we've designed this to uh meet those minimum uh areas necessary. We knew that we'd be requesting relief um for this application um and chose to uh direct that relief to the side setbacks. You'll notice in the site plan that the building is is uh offset on the plan. It's not centered on the site. Uh that was done intentionally to allow for a better means of access down one side of the home. Um if you look at the first floor plan, you'll see that not only do we have a front entry, which is customary um to be a front door for a home for guests to enter, but there's also a side entry that uh would be more of a convenience entry um for the homeowner and uh loading the kitchen. Um and coming directly from a vehicle, we we chose to hug or not hug, but shift the the home itself toward the north so that we'd have a little extra room on the south side in order to make that uh entrance accessible. And uh we we feel that uh the home is is well scaled within the neighborhood. Um we were, you know, sensitive with the design itself to uh design something that had uh an appeal, which was uh broken down in the mass uh to be attractive and to be fitting with the other neighborhood homes along the streetscape. And um I don't think, you know, personally, that we've we've designed any any spaces within this home that are excessive or out of um, you know, the means of what would be considered the minimum necessary for um a three to four bedroom home in this neighborhood.
So Greg, you you took the time as you developed this design, working with Kristen, to sort of uh take a look at what exists in the neighborhood. Is that fair to say?
Yes, I'm I'm familiar with this area. We've designed a number of homes in this area.
Okay, and what you're proposing at this property, what you've designed at this property is consistent with uh sort of the streetscape and what you see in the neighborhood in terms of size and scale?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Could you just uh briefly describe to the board, because I know the elevations that you provided do depict a deck in the in the inside the roof, if you will. So maybe you can just describe how that works. Um again, setting forth the effort made to sort of keep it within the the envelope of the building.
Uh of course, there there is a roof deck. Um you can see that on page one point three in our design plans. Um we've designed this deck uh such that it really does not um become a an object, um one that's that's visible to to passersby on the street, one that's really not um, you know, going to make its presence uh known to the 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 neighbors or passersby. Um we've kind of sensitively tucked this this roof deck uh to be below the upper roof lines themselves. And um if you look at the south elevation of the home, which is page A two point two, um you'll see that along this face, we've made a slight cutout within the roof line itself uh to allow some bit of that deck to have visibility or kind of open air breeze uh to that one side uh of the home. But otherwise, the deck itself is is mostly concealed uh from view from the exterior. Um so this this deck is really designed to, you know, provide additional uh outdoor air access uh for the home. Um as you all know, being Middletown residents, there are um selective views uh toward the the ocean from this area of the neighborhood. Um and the idea is to be able to to capture those on a limited basis from an area like this. Um and um, you know, there are clearly a number of homes in the area that have uh decks like this. We we really did not want to make an object out of it. We did not want to place the deck on top of the home per se. We we really did want to snug it into the design and almost make it non apparent. Um and um I think we've done that successfully.
And if you could briefly also discuss um uh the dimensions of the pool and the overall sort of site layout?
Okay, um the pool itself is designed as a twenty by thirty uh foot rectangle. Um you know, uh when we started discussions about the pool and what's that, an average sized pool, uh interestingly enough, this came up in the interestingly enough, this came up in the previous application. A 20 by 40 rectangle is what I would consider an average pool for in-ground structure. We, we downscaled that to a 20 by 30, which fits the site. It actually has lines that run parallel and kind of makes sense with the design of the structure itself. We felt that there was plenty of room around the structure to provide screening toward the neighbors, if that was going to be necessary. And I think we've placed it essentially so that it could be as conforming as possible toward the rear of the lot. But again, is, is asking for some setback relief to the north and south.
And Greg, last couple of questions to, to wrap up. In your opinion, is this, is this development and this structure too big for the lot?
No, I don't believe so at all. I think, I think this fits very well on this lot, and I think that it is scaled, you know, similarly to other homes in this neighborhood and on the street.
And in your work with Kristen to develop this plan, are you, is your testimony that the relief being requested by Kristen is the least relief necessary for the reasonable use and enjoyment of this property?
Yes, I believe that.
Okay. I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions for the architect from the board? Mr. Lizzy, it's late, I apologize. Greg, your deck that's there sits, what, what, what height is the actual deck at? I think it's at about 30 feet, correct?
Yeah, I'm just trying to look it up on the plan here. It is.
Because while, while you didn't seek relief from the height, you're only down two and a half feet, right? You're at 32 and a half, where 35 is allowed. So you really, you really didn't give the neighborhood a whole lot. Right? I mean, I mean, it's, I'm just being honest, right? You know, because if I'm, if I'm standing on the roof and I'm six foot tall, if I'm standing on that roof deck, where's my head going to be?
Oh, of course, if you're standing on the roof deck, you would, your head would be above the height of the roof. That's correct.
Right, so my head would be what, 35 feet or 36 feet?
Well, our roof is 31 foot nine, is what I'm looking at here, so three feet.
Down what, three feet down?
Yeah.
So my head's probably going to be right at about 35 feet, so you really didn't give me anything.
Well, I believe we did. The, the neighboring property also has a, a viewpoint, which is high on the building. And they, they specifically requested that we didn't go any higher with a solid structure so that they'd be able to enjoy views toward this direction.
Okay.
We've, we've met the, we've satisfied any concern that they would have had in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
And that, Greg, that one a butter that you've referenced, based on the placement of this structure, the design of the roof, and how you've incorporated the deck, that really would be the only a butter that would be impacted by the roof line. Is that fair to say?
I, I believe so, yes.
In terms of a view to the south towards the ocean, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
What is your setback on the northerly side?
It's eight feet, Mr. Chairman.
And then the other property looks like it sits right on this, on the, it looks like it's, it looks like it's sitting right on the property line.
Your butter to the north is, they're encroaching their own setback as well, that's correct.
But it looks like they're on the property line.
I, I don't believe so. I believe their building is about eight feet inward from the property line.
Okay, because I'm looking, and the aerial photos aren't always good, but I'm looking at the aerial photo and the drawing, and it looks like they're right on the property line. My, my concern again is access between the buildings.
Yeah, I, I have a plan that was developed by the site engineer, and he did place the adjacent building. And I can see that it's at least eight feet off of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, Chairman, I think what you're probably looking at is, it may be the butter to the north has parking in front of their house, and they have a retaining wall structure, which does go right close to the property line. But the, the building itself is, is setback off the side property line.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, as we were testifying in the last case, is the front porch and the julia balcony calculations in this for the 2100, or is it 2,200 square feet for this project?
I guess I'm not understanding your question. You mean in the front roof area or the living area?
The front roof is, is considered a deck. That's a lot coverage of.
Yes, correct. Absolutely, the, the decks, anything that is, you know, within.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I'm, I'm just running my numbers, trying to see if that was included in the total lot coverage.
I, I believe that it was. It's customary that we always include any deck or enclosed structure as part of a lot coverage calculation.
Thank you. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I can proceed with Mr. Hool.
That'd be fine.
Thanks.
Mr. Hool, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
James A. Hool, 198 Union Street, Portsmouth.
Mr. Hool, you've appeared before this committee on numerous occasions, so we're going to accept you as a real estate expert.
Thank you.
Jim, you were recently engaged by the property owner Kristen Zeikis to do an analysis of her request for dimensional relief regarding 172 Alston Avenue. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you submitted to the board your report in regards to this property, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if we could just have Mr. Hool's report identified and marked as Exhibit 1, applicant's Exhibit 1?
I will, I have it right here, and I've marked it.
Thank you. Jim, why don't you just go ahead and describe to the board the, the steps you undertook to do your analysis and what your conclusions are?
Well, you know, I looked at the petition, I looked at the neighborhood, the usual, went down to the site and made my analysis based on the request, which was to, you know, basically build a new house and a swimming pool to move the house to within eight feet of the north property line, 12 feet to the south property line, and lot coverage increased to 30.5%. So I looked at it, this is, you know, I'll, I'll get into each of the questions, but this is really basically a very small lot, substandard, at 6,800 square feet, 6,878. The, the thing that I think really stands out is the fact that this is really a narrow lot. It's only 50 feet wide. It is longer, it, it makes it very difficult to place a house that is of a reasonable width on a 50-foot wide lot. So I think that that is really the, the primary concern. The, the, I looked also at the lot coverage. And frankly, you know, I did my usual thing where I look through lot coverages in the neighborhood, and there are a handful of houses that exceed lot coverage. But in general, most of them adhere to around the 25% lot coverage. I think that what we really, you know, I'm going to probably state this again, but I think that when we look at this, the house itself, as Greg has testified, is really a modest house, and it would not on its own reach the 25%. It really is the extra square footage of the pool that extends over the lot to give us that 30 and a half percent. But the reality is that, you know, lot coverage, it, it's sort of lot coverage and lot coverage. There's no height above grade with the pool. So you're not blocking views, you're not blocking light and air. And it really has become a very standard accessory item that people want to have. So considering the size of the lot and the fact that even with the pool, it stays within the rear setback of the 30 feet, I found it to be really a very modest and conforming structure. I looked at it again in terms of the hardship to each of the criteria. Again, the relief is due to the unique characteristics of the land. This is a substandard lot, it's a narrow lot. I've already discussed, you know, the, the implications of that. The hardship is not a result of the prior act, prior act, prior action of the applicant, which is absolutely the case, the lots existed the way it is for a long period of time. And in fact, Kristen has actually moved to make the lot a little bit larger by combining the two lots together. Three, the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the neighborhood. It definitely will not. This is a densely populated area. As Greg has testified, the house is really a very similar type of house to the rest of the streetscape. I don't see any kind of a problem with it. One thing that I noticed were there were two pools that I really, that jumped out at me when I was looking at the neighborhood. One is on 75 Briarwood Avenue, and one is on 196 Alston Avenue. And when I looked at each of those, the, the lot on 196 Alston is almost 11,000 square feet, and it has lot coverage of 25%. And actually, just slightly goes over the 25%. The lot on Briarwood Avenue is a 7,400 square foot lot, and it has 30% lot coverage, including the pool. Our lot is 6,878 square feet, and we're asking for 30.5%. In fact, relative to the sizes of these lots, we have the smallest lot. And we have exactly the same lot coverage as 75 Briarwood, which is a larger lot. And we have, you know, proportionally a much smaller structure than the, the property at 198, 196 Alston Avenue. So I think from all the criteria of similarity and characteristics in the neighborhood, I think that it really is very homogeneous to the rest of the neighborhood. And then we look at the leaf, the relief to be granted as being the least relief, considering what Kristen is trying to do and the care they put in the design and the fact that they've accommodated the neighbor in terms of the height, I think that it is the least relief necessary. And I, I believe that it would be more than a mere inconvenience for the petitioner to be refused the request. So I think that it's, all in all, I think that it is a very good petition. It's well thought out, it fits the neighborhood, and, and I see no negative aspect to it.
So Jim, to be clear, your testimony is, and your expert opinion meets all the criteria necessary to grant the dimensional variances requested?
That's correct.
I have nothing else for Mr. Hool, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Hool?
Yeah, Jim, I do. I, I think the argument that you've made is very clear and concise when it comes to the home, but I think it, it doesn't apply at all to the pool. And I think, you know, we have the opportunity here to not fall into the same trap that we're put in all the time. And that was a good case to have set before this one, was a previous case, where the owner truly had nothing to do with the dimensions of the house and the percent lot coverage they purchased. And in this case here, we have the opportunity to ensure that doesn't happen again, even though it does make sense, based on the lot that you talked about, to give the variances for the structure itself. Because, as you mentioned, there's no other way to build a livable home on that structure. But as far as I'm concerned, the pool is, is not something that I would consider.
The only response I have to that is the point that I brought up about the two other pools that were in the neighborhood. You know, I think that they, the one on 196 Alston Avenue, as I said, it just slightly is above the 25%, and it's a very large lot. And the one on Briarwood is a larger lot than we have, and they have the same lot coverage. I, I don't think that, I look at it in terms of the overall, what they are, what Kristen is trying to do is to maintain a structure that has the pool, the, a modest house with the pool that conforms to the rest of the neighborhood. And I understand fully what you're saying, but, you know, one of the problems that I have is that when you're in these neighborhoods that are sort of dense, densely developed neighborhoods, and you have substandard lots, it's a little bit different than having a, a larger lot where you're building a giant house and then coming in and asking for that relief, which we see all the time. I, I, I really think that the overall project is, is not going to be detrimental to the rest of the neighborhood. And, and you know, these pools, it's kind of interesting, but the, the, you know, one of the things that's really pushed these, this whole idea of having a pool on site is the last year we've seen, I mean, a lot of people have been building pools on site, so that's become a very common thing. But when you're dealing with what we've dealt with over the last year, where everybody is trying to maintain everything within their site, where they're working from home, they're recreating from home, that the idea of having a pool becomes much more essential than it used to be. And I'm not sure how, you know, short of making the house very small and maybe not conforming to new standards, I don't know how you'd fit it on, on a small lot. And I don't think it's that outrageous. Go ahead.
Mr. Hool, the choice of the lot was a free choice, correct?
It was.
Okay, so, great. It was a choice to buy a lot that was 6,000 square feet where 10,000 is required.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't have a problem with what you're saying.
I understand everything, but I, I kind of agree with Mr. Heaney in that, you know, the house, as far as I'm concerned, pushes the envelope. It's a big house on a small lot. There's no other way to put it. It is a big house on a small, and now we're adding to the non-conformance of the lot if we allow a pool to go forward in the same, same vein, right? Because this is new construction.
It is.
This is new construction, this is a brand new building going up. I don't doubt that the pool is, is valuable because of COVID and everything else. But right now, you know, when I look at it, the house is in the setbacks on the sides. It's, for all intents and purposes, it's at the max height. It's, it's two and a half feet from it, but that's close enough. I mean, it's a big structure on a small lot. And we're, if you look at the, I'm looking at the map right now of the, of the street, this is not going to be the last petition. In fact, we have another one later tonight, you know, six, six lots up the street.
Yes, you do, and I think we had one last week.
Yeah, it's difficult to sit here and justify, because in the file, yes, there's a letter of support, but then there's a letter questioning the size, not only of the proposed house here, but all the, all the houses on the street that have been allowed to be built. So we have to weigh that and determine what the best approach is. So, you know, I, I just don't know what to say, you know? And I hear people saying that you need a house of a certain size to make it livable. I live in a Rhode Island one and a half.
I, my house is very small. I, I don't argue that at all. But the, the problem is that I'm kind of a dinosaur, and I'm not saying you are.
No, I know, I know, but the, the argument, the argument can't be put forth that it's the house that we need to build on the lot to get the return that we need.
I, I, I really appreciate what you're saying, and I don't disagree with you. I only look at it in terms of whether or not it would be detrimental to the neighborhood, whether it's commonplace to the neighborhood. And I don't really see anything that jumps out at me that tells me differently on it. But I, I appreciate what you're saying. And, you know, if you feel that the integrity of the code, then, you know, I, I can't argue with you. But I, I look at it in terms of its impact, and I, I don't think the impact is great.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a request?
Sure.
So obviously, we've gotten feedback from two of you with concerns about the total lot coverage as it relates to the pool. Would the board be willing to allow the applicant to continue this to the next meeting so we can try to revisit or make some type of redesign? It won't require any new advertising. Obviously, what we'd be doing is reducing the, the relief requested and see if we can come back with something that may be more palatable to the board?
Absolutely, Mr. Jackson. In fact, we can put you on for the 23rd.
If, if we may, could we do that, please?
I, I have no problem doing that, Mr. I, I have no problem doing that. Uh, Mr. Regan, that's within our purview, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes, so we're going to continue this till the twenty-third. I just want to be clear, Russ, that I, I support what the applicant's doing. I just, we just have to balance it, you know?
And that's what we're going to try to do a, a little more acutely as it relates to the pool.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson. We're going to continue this until the twenty-third. Thank you, Mrs. Zekus.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Heaney, can you read the next case?
Petition of Robert Mastin, owner by his attorney, Jeremiah C. Lynch, the third, for a variance from sections six oh three, seven oh one, and eight oh three G to demolish the existing attached garage and construct a twelve foot by twenty-four foot attached garage with a side yard setback of two point nine four feet where fifteen feet is required. Said real estate is located at forty Beachview Terrace and further identified as lot fourteen on Taxessence Platt, one twenty-one Southwest.
I believe Mr. Lynch is the attorney of record. Do you see him out there, Angela?
I do not. There is only one hand raised and it was the lady that spoke in the beginning, Kathy and Dave Silveria.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I am, just for the record, I'm recused on this matter. But it's my understanding that, uh, Mr. Lynch was asking that this be continued to the twenty-third. And I believe Mr. Jackson, who represents in a butter, can confirm that.
Is that correct, Mr. Jackson?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
We are going to continue this until the twenty-third. Thank you, gentlemen. Angela, we're not going to open it up to public discussion because none of the hearings that we've had so far warrant public discussion. So we're going to keep moving with the agenda. Am I correct in that, Mr. Regan?
I'm not sure I understand.
We had somebody raising their hand for input and we haven't opened anything up to the public.
No, if you haven't, you, you, you're not hearing that matter. You're just continuing it. So I would just move on to the next item.
Thank you. Mr. Heaney, can you read the next petition, please?
Petition of Newport Realty Incorporated owner and Food Love Market Middletown LLC applicant by their attorney, David P. Martland Esquire for a special use permit from section six oh two to allow a liquor license in connection with the retail market. And from article twelve, section two twelve, twelve, twelve to allow for a post sign of forty-eight square feet where sixteen square feet is allowed and a height of twelve feet where six feet is allowed. Said real estate is located at N thirty-seven Aquinic Avenue and further identified as lot twenty-two on Taxessence Platt, one thirteen.
Mr. Martland?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Martland on behalf of the applicant and owner. With me tonight, I have Nathan Godfrey, who's a real estate expert. Also, I believe that Ken Kusen, Kusan is also online, who's a representative of the applicant. The matter before the board tonight involves a request for a special use permit. There are two requests. One is to allow for a, a liquor license associated with the restaurant and retail market that's being proposed by my client. Uh, and the second request is to allow a freestanding sign with forty-eight square feet of total area where sixteen's permitted and a height of twelve feet where eight is permitted. Uniquely under the, under the ordinance, this is not a dimensional variance, but is judged under the provisions for a, a special use permit. I know it's been a, a long night and a lot of testimony, so, uh, you know, I do have Mr. Kusen to answer any questions the board might have. But what I'd like to do is just sort of indicate to the, to, to the board what my client is looking to do. And if you've got any questions, I can have, can answer those. But, you know, essentially the Newport Restaurant Group is, is the, the entity that is really behind this proposal. The Restaurant Group wants to create this new concept of a food love market where you'll be able to go in, you'll be able to pick up items that that are commonly served in a, a number of their different restaurants. So there'll be specialty items from the morning, the, the twenty-two Bowens Trio restaurants they've got around, around the state. So you'll be able to pick up that. You'll also be able to pick up other food merchandise. That you'll be able to take home. You know, there'll be prepared meals, things of that nature. There's also a, a portion of this that's made to order. Where you can have it made to order and take it to go. Or you can utilize the seating areas, one that's going to be located inside and one that is located outside. And that, that is displayed on the, the plans that were submitted with the application. In connection with that onsite eating, my client is looking to be able to offer customers the opportunity to have beer and wine. So before we go to the council, we have to come to, to the zoning board. Because that aspect of, of this requires a special use permit. The, the service of, of liquor. And so we're, we're seeking the special use permit for that particular portion of the use. Additionally, we've got the, the pylon sign, and as I indicated, we've got the, the freestanding sign that's forty-eight square feet total. If I could ask that I be able to share my screen? So this this was the, the proposed sign. It's twelve feet in height. The main portion of the sign is seven feet by four feet. So that's twenty-eight square feet for, for that main portion. You've got the, 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 sort of the tagline across, which is a one foot high section, five feet shop, eat and explore. And then they're looking to have a place to show different featured brands that they, they bring in. And to, to be able to utilize those, those portions of it in this sort of mercantile marketplace. Each one of those obviously is two and a half square feet. So when you add it all up, you get to forty-eight square feet. And so the request tonight gets viewed under the special use permit provisions. So I have with me Nate Godfrey, that I'd like to call as an expert to, to testify about this proposal.
Okay, Mr. Godfrey? Are you there?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Godfrey, raise your right hand so I can swear you in for this.
Yes, sir.
You swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Nathan Godfrey. I'm the principal of Newport Appraisal Group. Office is at two twenty-one Third Street, Middletown, Rhode Island, uh, Newport, Rhode Island. Scratch that.
Okay, and you've appeared before this board on numerous occasions, so we're going to accept you as an expert witness.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Godfrey, you, you've had an opportunity to speak to the petitioner regarding this proposal. Was that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and if you could just explain to the board what the petitioner is proposing as a use?
Sure. The, uh, the application, as I understand it, will involve the front two-thirds of the building in a retail market food environment with some dining. And the back third of the building will be retained, the current uses of storage primarily. And the, uh, the dining, uh, in addition to the market. They'd like to, they'd like to include beer and wine service. So that's one of the criteria, the second being the, or not criteria, but reason for them being here tonight, special use permit. The second being the freestanding sign and its dimensions, but the retail market with some sit-down dining, casual dining and beer and wine service.
So you've had an opportunity to review the petition. You've discussed the petition with the applicant. Have you also, uh, you know, taking a, a site visit?
Yeah, this is a building Newport Appraisal Group's been involved with for the last twenty-five years. We, uh, we evaluate this property as part of the, uh, the ownership package and their annual accountings. And it's, uh, it's sort of interesting in that I never noticed it when I drive down the street. And it surprised me to go by it the other day. And they've done a, and are doing a very extensive rehab and renovation to the front of it in preparation for this. They're really doing a nice job, a lot of construction on site. And my site visit was limited to the interior at the time. They didn't want anyone inside, uh, I think some COVID related and, and also the fact that I showed up unannounced, but the, uh, the exterior is going through a substantial upgrade out front. And the existing sign out there is completely dilapidated and fall down, but that's been that way for some time. So I did conduct the site visit to the extent possible.
And the the, the use itself, you've looked at the surrounding area located here?
Yeah, the, the, the retail market use has existed in some way, shape and form along Aquinic Ave, I think Aquinic Meet. Particularly my, my focus on the beer and wine service. Because that's the nature of the permit and the application. Interesting, the, the, the street is pretty much bookend by Plumby's and Diego's or Reject Beer, however you want to look at it. So that, that some of the newer liquor services are, uh, you know, these, these spots we're looking in, lo and behold, it's, it's, it's consistent with the, the same application in that taking a, a property that I think we can say was exhibiting fair amounts of deferred maintenance and really needing some money and an injection of capital and seeing those types of improvements going in, in those locations. Within the, within the middle of the street. I believe you got the, the new cigar bar. And I believe SeaShy as well is, uh, working out with a liquor license. So that as a use on the street is common and, you know, recently been added to, and I think added to successfully in terms of rehabbing some properties. The sign, uh, the sign package is very consistent with right next door, ten seventy-seven. Aquinic Ave has, has virtually an identical sign to what's, what's being requested. Seven ninety-six, eight oh nine Aquinic Ave, there's, there's, you know, the signs up and down the street that are more or equal to what is being requested. My, my concern there at that spot is the elementary school and the middle school. Got that school. I, I'm always looking there. I'm, I'm keenly interested in what's going on there more than when I go by. That's why I, I think I don't pay attention to this as an address particularly. So I think the signage at the road is important for this address. At least to, to the way I drive, I'm more looking for that crosswalk and is anyone standing in it rather than what's around me or what's about me. So the uses and the sign package, I think, are, are existing, common and not unusual at all for Aquinic Avenue.
And you've had the opportunity to review the standards and provisions related to the granting of a special use permit. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. You, you've got a, uh, you've got a five, a five test requirement for special use permit. The first being will not result in a significant diminution of property values in the surrounding area of the district. Putting a ton of money into a property that needs it will only improve this property. I don't see this as a use as anything but appropriate. The, the one spot that I look to for a similar type of use is over in Narragansett, if you're familiar with Boston Neck Road, which is very similar to Aquinic Ave in terms of traffic. And a rocks market went in the north end some time ago. Very similar without the beer and wine, but a very much necessary addition, to my opinion, in my opinion, to the neighborhood. So I think that retail market, that takeaway food, that prepared food is, is a, is a real sort of sweet spot in retail offering. That's certainly not going to create a diminution. It's certainly not going to create a nuisance either. I think it'd be compatible to everything that exists out there. That's your second test. Your third test is, is it compatible with the comprehensive community plan? Again, I go back to the land use section and the goals. There's nothing in this application that's inconsistent with the land use section goals. I believe it meets that test. Your fourth requirement is the granting of such special use permit will not be detrimental to or substantially or permanently injure the appropriate use of property in the surrounding area or district. The retail use is, is, is permitted as a matter of right. It's the special use permits for the, the signage and the beer and wine that, that, you know, the nature of this application. So to that extent, I think, uh, the beer and wine, I think, I think Middletown manages it very well and appropriately. And I, I don't think a beer and wine license in this setting is, is any way, shape or form inappropriate. You know, you can look at some of the other, other conditions that were out there, a social club and so forth. They all seem to be respectable operators with these licenses. And we know the owner and the applicant of this and we know their history. And we know that it's nothing but, but absolutely stellar when it comes to beer and wine service and responsibilities that go along with those licenses. So I'm very comfortable with that. And lastly, the granting of the special use permit will not result in hazardous conditions or conditions inimical to public health, safety or welfare. Uh, I, I can't find it in a, in a sign package or a, uh, or a beer and wine license in the retail neighborhood market, I think is a terrific use. So I think it meets those criteria for the special use permit. Your, your sign, your section twelve, twelve, your permitted signs has, has a five-step test as well, looking at the quality, character and appropriateness. The sign is designed, as I understand it, is very consistent with the street. It's not overly sized compared to what exists. I think it's appropriate for where you are. I don't want to be looking at anything except what's in front of me on the road. This sign is appropriately placed. And it's of those materials that I think you've been striving to bring in. The aesthetic impact on the public right of way, I think, will enhance it. The total sign area on the premises is appropriate and minimal. Existing nonconforming signs, I don't believe there's any except the fall down sign that's out there. I don't believe it's nonconforming as far as I can tell. And lastly, the entire site design and layout of the property, I believe is appropriate. I, I can't identify anything that's inappropriate with this site design. So you, you've got some criteria to meet in section twelve, twelve, and I believe that the sign package meets it there as well. The last thing I look at on a special use permit is what could be the impact? Typically it's hazardous material or odor or noise, traffic stigma or appearance, appearance. And I can tell you, I, I can't identify any, any element within the special use permit where there would be a negative impact that's typically considered. That's typically considered, even atypically considered. I can't see an impact here for anything.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions for Mr. Godfrey. I don't know if the board would have any.
I just have one question, David. The, the current use of the storage in the back for the docks and all that, is that going to continue?
Yes, that will continue. So the, the back third of the building and the outdoor storage associated with that is going to continue. This essentially new tenant is going to be taking the, the, the front two thirds of the building. And then, you know, the, you know, that, that back area will be, continue to be fenced off.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question.
I have a question for the person that has to do with the sign. That be? Making of the sign.
The making of the sign. I, I don't have the this, the sign designer here tonight. But I may be.
Well, my concern is the address, the ten thirty seven, it's on the bottom of the sign and not up at the top. I understand the speed limit now there. But my concern with the signs is the, the address be at the top so people driving down the street would not have a problem seeing the address. That being on the bottom of that sign, although it's uplit. It still would have a hard time seeing that street sign, the number, the ten thirty seven. I'd like to see that at the top.
Yeah, we could certainly look to relocate that, that, that numbering and I, I understand the point that you're you're making there. At the ground level, it may be difficult for someone who's looking for an address.
It is. I mean, and typically i- in the past, like out on West Main Road and stuff, they they've moved the numbers up to the top of the sign. So that it would be relatively easy for our aging public to see the street sign. And not slow down and, and get into an accident because they're going so slow to look for a certain address. That would be a safety.
Yeah, we could certainly look at amending, you know, and, and providing for that address to be located in a more easily visible area.
Any, Mr. Heaney, would you like to ask your question now?
Yes, Mr. Martland, in the application, you talk about a liquor license. And then you talk to in terms of the other aspects of the retail market, eating in and takeout. What's the vision for the liquor license? We're not thinking about selling out the door like a package store. We're only thinking about selling to the customers that are seated and consuming food inside. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. Yeah, this would be only for dine in service.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, sorry for that. They, they could have been more clear.
Any other questions for Mr. Martland or any of the witnesses? Mr. Martland, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I don't have anything further, Mr. Chairman.
With your permission, I'm going to open it up to the public. If the board doesn't have any more questions for Mr. Martland. Seeing now, I'm going to see if there's anyone on, on, in the public that would like to speak on or, on or against the petition. Angela, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion to accept the, let's start with the it's late and I forget, Mr. Regan, do we do the variance first or the special use?
You would do the
There, there were only a special use permit requests tonight.
Okay, good. So can I have a motion to accept the special use permit as presented?
This is Chris Souza. I make the motion to accept the special use permit as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Tom Silvera.
Thank you, Tom. Discussion?
I, I agree with Mr. Godfrey's testimony. He, he went through the, the special use permit criterion. I, I agree with the points he made. There's other signs on the street that are of similar size. There's other restaurants and takeouts. Sit down restaurants that are serving alcohol and I'm looking forward to have a bite to eat there if this gets approved. I just, I hope another takeout place can survive that area, but I, I I hope they all thrive.
Any other, any other discussion on the matter?
The, the other point that I liked and, and we've seen that now up and down Aquinic Avenue is the rehab of existing buildings and facilities for reuse. I think it's really important for us to do that. In addition to obviously build where we can, but rehabbing particularly in this district is really important. Because of the, you know, the effect that it has, you know, successful businesses breeding and beginning other successful businesses. So I think this is a, a good pattern and I'm going to support this.
Yeah. I too am going to accept the proposal. This, the, especially use has five criteria as as Mr. Godfrey pointed out, and I believe that this absolutely fits within the, the, the criteria. I don't think there'll be any diminution of property values. I don't think that it will create a nuisance in the neighborhood. I, I believe it's compatible with our comprehensive plan and as my fellow members have said, I think it's awesome when we rehab existing buildings. We don't knock them down. And finally, I don't think that there'll be any hazardous conditions created because the traffic on Aquinic Avenue is already you know, pretty similar to what the issues would need to survive. So I think it absolutely fits within the five criteria. So I too am going to support it. So with that, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Who's, who's opposed? Mr. Silvera? No, everyone's, everyone's for it, right?
No, no.
I only heard Mr. Souza say aye and Mrs. Silvera say nay. So that's like two people, as far as I'm concerned, that voted.
You got an aye, you got an aye from Chris Souza. I support it.
Aye from Tom Heaney, I support it.
Mr. Silvera, before we finalize the vote, would you like to express why you're not supporting it?
I am supporting it. I didn't say I wasn't supporting it. I said, I said aye for yes.
Okay. Nancy, do you have that? I think we have a five zero vote. I'm going to go, I'm going to call a roll call and just give me your vote. If you're, if you're voting for it, say yea, and if you're voting against it, say nay. Mr. Souza?
Yay.
Mr. Silvera?
Yay.
Mr. Heaney?
Yay.
Yay.
Olin Gumbrell? Butch?
He left the call at one point. Something was wrong with his screen, it looked like.
We're going to go to our, our next alternate, which is Mr. Bacon, Mr. Bacon. He's supporting it. Can you take it off mute so we can hear your vote? Can we do a thank you, Andy. And I'm, I'm the last one and I'm going to vote it. So we have a five zero, five members voting. The alternate voting was Andy Bacon.
Way to go, Andy.
Yay.
David Hontoon, we were so close to calling you.
Like that. I, I really thought I was going to pull through for you guys tonight. It's seven hours. I'm still going strong.
The fact that Andy was able to figure out the mute, mute button. Oh, man, that got you on, you were on deck, ready to go.
In the clutch, man.
Okay, gentlemen, it is nine twenty. We, we have, thank you, Mr. Martland. Thank you, Newport Restaurant Group. We have one more case. Actually, we have two more cases. Do we have the stamina to push? I see heads nodding, so we're going to keep going. Mr. Heaney, can you read the next case?
Yeah, go for it.
Petition of the Rochelle Trust Owners and Newport Harbor Realty Limited Liability Company applicants by their attorneys Adler Pollock Sheen PC for a variance from sections six oh three, seven oh one and eight oh three G to demolish the existing garage impartial deck and to allow the construction of a single family dwelling with a northerly side yard setback of ten feet and a southerly side yard setback of ten feet where fifteen is required. Said real estate is located at zero Alston Avenue and further identified as lot twenty nine on Taxessus Platt, one sixteen northeast.
Is the attorney for the petitioner here?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, John Russell, I'm from Adler Pollock Bellevue Ave, Newport. Could you also let in my colleague Danielle De Fault, Mr. Hool and Mr. Matt Hadfield, please? The applicant.
Did you get all that, Angela? Yep, she's, she's on it.
Thank you. Angela's the best. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll turn it over to my, my partner Danielle De Fault. Take it away, Danielle.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. With us tonight, Mr. Chairman, just quickly, as my colleague John Russell said, myself, Danielle De Fault from Adler Pollock and Sheen, forty nine Bellevue Ave, Newport. And my colleague John Russell with us tonight. We also have on behalf of the petitioner, Newport Harbor Realty LLC, Matthew Hadfield and James Hool is prepared to testify on behalf of the applicant as our real estate and land use expert. We also have attorney David Martland here on representing the owners, the Rochelle Trust. And Mr. Chair, I think, so this was continued, I'm, I'm sure the board knows, from February twenty third hearing. Where the chair and the board asked us to work with the town solicitor attorney Peter Regan regarding the merger of the lots issue. And, and whether they had been lots twenty eight C and lot twenty nine had been merged by use. So we followed the chair's instructions and after reviewing tax assist or database certain title documents and speaking with attorney Regan a few times. It's our understanding that the chair and the board were satisfied that the two lots are two separate lots. Albeit legally nonconforming lots, but they're two separate buildable lots as indicated on the zoning certificate that we submitted to the board with our application. And so it's my understanding that that matter may have been no longer an issue for the board and, and if so, we can proceed.
I, I just have, I just have one issue that Mr. Martland can address. And it has to do with the deck that's there now. There is no record of the deck being built. And so for this to become a buildable lot, that deck needs to come down in its entirety. There's no record of it being built and it's on your property right now. And so if they're going to modify it, then they have to appear before us to, to, because it's in the setback, they're going to have to get zoning relief to modify it. We can circumvent that if the owners of that lot agree that it's coming off. And then they can come in and apply for a new permit to put back a replacement.
Yeah, I, I can, I could certainly stipulate that my, my client will have the, the deck removed forthwith.
That, that, that's, it's not a modification.
Not a modification. They would, you know, there may be, you know, the necessity for stairs and a landing.
That's understandable. But they have enough room with the setback there to have that?
These stairs and the landing?
Yes.
The, if, if I understand correctly, we be, because the deck is located in that area, we would have the ability to, to put that in. I'm not looking at a site plan presently.
Yeah, my only concern is that the egress is on their, on their lot and not on the other lot.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, what I would recommend and, and I'm, I'm sure with regard to restoring whatever maybe preexisting steps or landing may have been there prior to the erection of the deck. If, if you get to the point of later in the evening of approving this, that, that you can make that a condition of approval, that the deck be removed.
Right. And, and that the egress will be on their property entirely.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chair, that would be, the egress would be located entirely on lot twenty eight C.
One, use the address. I don't have the lot. Is that one, one eighty eight or?
Yeah, so that would be one eighty eight also.
That's all I needed to hear.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So go ahead, Ms. De Fault. Tell us about your project. So we're going to have a buildable lot.
Yes, so now we're going to have a buildable lot. So thank you. And I do want to thank Attorney Regan for the chair and the board and Attorney Regan for working with us through that matter and his his assistance was helpful and to Attorney Martland as well. So as the board is aware, the application that was filed with the board is for zero Alston Ave, that is lot twenty nine located on Platt one sixteen NE. And that is for a side yard setbacks, both on the northerly side yard and the southerly side yard setbacks for ten foot variance where fifteen feet is required. Mr. Chair with us tonight is Matthew Hadfield, who's prepared to testify about the application and his intention about the property, if the chair and the board would like to hear from him.
Absolutely, Mr. Hadfield. Raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Matthew Hadfield, four eighty one Walcott Ave, Middletown, Rhode Island.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. De Fault.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Matthew, so the petition currently in front of the board, as I stated, was for side yard setbacks of ten feet where fifteen is required. So that's on both of the side setbacks for the proposed single family dwelling structure. Is it correct that you're currently under contract to purchase the subject property that we're discussing tonight?
That's correct.
And what are your plans for that property and the, and the single family dwelling you're going to build on it?
I plan to bill it, build it and then market it and sell it.
So you don't intend on, you know, keeping it and renting it out for short term rentals or as an Airbnb?
I do not.
Thank you. And in your petition, you submitted certain plans and elevations and, and a narrative about your plans for the property. And it showed the footprint of the property and the single family dwelling you're proposing on it. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is it accurate to say that you worked with Northeast Engineers and Tessa Architects to design that single family dwelling so that you had to request the least amount of relief necessary?
Yes.
And could you have proposed and maybe build, building permits without requesting any relief?
Yes.
And would that structure have been larger than the proposed structure that's part of the plans that you are proposing this evening?
It would have been narrower and longer, but it could have been about the same size or a little bit bigger.
A little bit bigger by right and without having to request any variances for side yard, rear, rear yard.
That's correct. Yes.
And why did you choose to go with this? The, the structure that you're proposing in front of the board tonight, which requires both side yard setbacks?
Yeah, for a couple of reasons. The first reason, well, before I, I almost didn't put it under agreement because I'm really good friends with the neighbors. I've lived a couple of properties away for about twelve years, so I really didn't want to step into a hornet's nest, but here I am. So anyways, the first thing I So anyways, the first thing I, the first call I made was to my neighbors, Stephen and Cheryl Moran, and said, "I'm purchasing the property. You know, what are your concerns?" And their major concern was, you know, a longer house that had windows that overlooked their backyard. So I said, "If I make it a little bit wider and a little less deep, would that be good for you?" And they said, "Yes." So I worked with Alec Tessa. I said, "I want to keep within the lot coverage. I want to keep within the rear setback. I'm gonna keep within the front setback, but, you know, I might go for zoning or a side setback relief." I mean, I'm pretty familiar with the area. I've seen all the different houses go up, and the narrow lots is tough. You know, Alec and I talked about it, and, you know, to get a house that looks good, you need setback relief. I could easily flip it, make it narrower, but it's gonna be ugly. And, you know, the less detail I put into the house, the cheaper the construction is. I get that. But I thought this was a really good design based on the area. I brought the plans to the abutters, and, you know, they liked them. So I basically had him draw it up, and here we are. And I don't have a pool.
Yes, the pools, that's good to know. Thank you for not applying for a pool as well. And so you spoke about talking to the abutters and specifically the Morins who own property to the south. Your southerly abutters, and is it your understanding that the Morins, that's 196 Alston, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it's my understanding, your understanding, that they have offered a letter in support of your application?
Yes, yeah, I mean, after I bought it, they were relieved that I was the purchaser and wrote a letter.
And it's also your understanding that the Morins worked with Alec Tessa Architecture for their house as well, and that your proposed dwelling will fit within the character of the surrounding neighborhood and area?
Yeah, I knew that was a big question, so I picked the same architect. I mean, it obviously looks different, but it's very similar. Across the street is Renfrew Circle, and the scaling is very similar there. So I thought this was, you know, really applicable to the site.
And besides the Morins at 196 Alston, the setup and the configuration and the footprint of the proposed dwelling, it gives the rear abutter, which is located to the east of the east property line, it gives them more space between their buildings and your proposed dwelling as well, correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's a dilapidated garage in the backyard. They'll be torn down. It's gonna be grass. I'm gonna do an arprovites in the backyard. If you look at the third floor in the back and the side, there are little windows. There's gonna be no, I mean, they're just for light, basically. So I really tried hard not to impact any of my abutters. The ones that impacted the most are Stephen and Cheryl, which, you know, I sat down with them twice at their house and went over the plans with them.
And by Stephen and Cheryl, you're referring to Morins at 196 Alston?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. I don't, Mr. Chair, I have no further questions for Mr. Hadfield.
Okay, does anyone on the board, does anyone, anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Hadfield? See, go ahead with.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to now have the testimony of Mr. James Hool as our real estate and land use expert, like him to testify on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, Mr. Hool, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
J. Hool, HOU, 198 Union Street, Portsmouth.
Mr. Hool, you've appeared before this board on numerous occasions, actually numerous tonight. We'll accept you as an expert testimony.
Thank you.
Witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Hool.
Good evening.
So thank you for being here with us this evening. Mr. Hool, can you just walk us through, I know that you provided a report to the board, and we submitted that to Mr. Costa as well. And in developing your opinion about the proposed dwelling at Alston Ave on Lot 29, can you just tell us what you did to arrive at that opinion?
Sure. I, you know, of course, reviewed the petition. I looked at the plans, visited the neighborhood, and went through the zoning code as applies to this property and the petition. And I prepared a report, which essentially stated my opinion that, quite frankly, I didn't see that there was any impact from the property. We have, the house that's being proposed is going to conform to the lot coverage. It will conform to the front and rear setbacks. It will conform to the height requirement. We are looking for variances on the sidelines, north and south sidelines, 10 feet where 15 is required. And really, the, you know, I looked at it in terms of the criteria of the code, and, you know, again, I look at the five major criteria for dimensional relief, for dimensional variances. The hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the land. This is a 50-foot wide lot. There's only 5,800 square feet. So we are looking at a lot that is only about half of the required land area in an R-10 zone. It has 50-foot frontage where 100 is required in the R-10 zone. So again, you have the natural issue of having a substandard lot that is substandard, again, by size and width, so that it creates this kind of a situation that to fit a house, as Matt has testified, that is not long and narrow, but has the proportions that are more standard and more attractive from the street, that I'm looking for a little bit wider and a less deep house. So I think that the hardship, of course, is the lot size itself. The hardship is not a prior action. The lot has been in existence for a long period of time. The granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character. It definitely will not, it will not impair the intent or purpose or chapter of the comp plan. I don't believe it would at all. You know, one of the items, 803G, really speaks to the fact that on, that it allows this type of a variance on a lot that is not able to be, you're not able to keep within the setbacks for particular reasons like the substandard nature of the lot. It allows the board the discretion of allowing this kind of a variance. And I think that it's very important to note that that is part of the code and applies in this situation. I don't, I forget. I'm sorry. Hang on one second. The relief is the least relief. We're only looking for a little bit on the sideline. And the reason that we're doing that is, again, to make the house more conforming. And the hardship would be greater than a mere inconvenience. I believe that is true also for all the reasons that we've already discussed relating to the hardship. I think it really is important, again, to know that a 20-by-63-foot house could be built on a lot of the same height. It would actually be larger than the design that's here. And I believe the design is actually in better harmony with the neighborhood than what could be an alternate. So I think that it satisfies all the criteria of the variances that are being requested.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hool. And just, Mr. Hool, you spoke about the proposed design being in accordance with the comp plan and the zoning ordinances, and in particular, too, that this was in accordance with the zoning designation for this lot in the area as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, because it's a very, it's a densely developed neighborhood, and it really conforms to, you know, what the legislative intent of the R-10 zone is.
Thank you, Mr. Hool. And just to be clear, and I appreciate, I know you stated that it complies with all the criteria, but just to be clear, the only relief we're seeking is side-to-side setbacks, relief from the side setbacks. And there is no relief being sought from lot coverage. It is in compliance with the 25%. It's actually a little under. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Hool. Mr. Chair, I have no further questions for Mr. Hool at this time. And I'd ask that his report that we submitted via email to Mr. Costa be introduced as applicant's Exhibit A, please.
We'll put that down as Exhibit A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, at this time, I have no further questions for either Mr. Hadfield or Mr. Hool, and would welcome any questions from the chair or the board.
Okay, let me, let me ask, if anyone has any questions. Does anyone on the board have any questions for either the architect or Mr. Hool? Okay, seeing none, let me open it up to the public. Is there any, is there anyone on the line that would like to speak either for or against the testimony, the petitioner? Angela, do you see anyone?
I believe Mr. Moran's on.
I've let three people in.
Okay, very good. I don't know who's here, so, Mr. Moran, if you're here.
Yes, hi.
Okay. Regular, please.
Hello, Steve Moran. My wife's next to me, Stephen and Cheryl Moran, 196 Alston Ave.
Do you swear the testimony tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
So I would just, we would like to comment, and my wife is sitting next to me. But first of all, we've lived here, or we've owned this property for almost 18 years. We used it in the summer, rented it to the Walcott, you know, and then eventually, our dream came true of finally renovating the property for our retirement and our eventual full-time move to Middletown, which we thankfully have done and moved in since July of 2018. And Alec Tessa helped, he designed the house, and we built the home. And we love it, and it's where we will live out our years. We've known Matt Hadfield for all of those years, as in a butter. And when Matt decided to put an offer on the property next door, he contacted us immediately to discuss his ideas, and we were both very appreciative of that. We certainly would have anticipated that, but Matt was very sensitive to our property and our personal situation. We have a almost, well, 11,800-square-foot property. We have an existing pool on the property that was there when we bought the property. We had a small ranch that we renovated on the same exact footprint. We just went up with a two-story home. We did not go up with a three-story home. We stayed within limits. And our backyard is our sanctuary. It's spectacular. We're both in our mid-60s. We're in that zone of our life where this is, this is where we spend all of our time. And our kids have been down here in the summer. We've, you know, kind of become part of the community, both, you know, school, summer, and working. And so it's very special to us. So Matt came to us with his ideas of how he could put a home that would abut our property to the north. And he was very considerate of how we would, how the house would be situated on that, I think it's 6,800 or whatever, square foot lot, considerate of minimizing the, I call it the glass looking down on our pool in our backyard. And rough sketches than formal design and elevations that he got from his architect, Alec Tessa. And they were very, very considerate of our wishes. And we wrote a letter in support of the project. And based upon the design or the elevation and the plans, we're very supportive of it. And we appreciate that. I will say, I have to say, relative, we've been on all night. We were listening to an earlier discussion about the property up the street. I do appreciate the fact that Matt is not deciding to, looking to develop the property, basically consuming almost all of the available square footage on the footprint. Our home is an existing home with an existing pool and existing footprint. And we did not look to go way outside the bounds on our project we did three or four years ago. And I think it's important that, and Matt has been, in terms of the design, I think his attorney, his representative, pointed this out, and it's, I agree, we agree. The design is very nice and conducive to the designs of our home and the homes around us, Renfrew Park and what have you. And I think it'll, I think it'll complement the neighborhood. So those are our, those are our thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Kathy and Dave Silvera, if you can take yourself off mute. Who's gonna be speaking? Kathy, you are? Okay, good. Kathy, raise your right hand for me, please. Do you swear the testimony tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name and address for the record.
Kathy Silvera. I live at 52 Center Avenue. I live behind Alston Avenue. I'm behind the 174, the 172, the 180, and now where Matt is buying the property.
So you're gonna be within 200 feet?
I think that I just might have missed being in a butter of his by, you know, probably inches. But I just have a question, because I had spoken to the Morins and a few other people when I found this was going on. There are already two houses on that lot and a garage. My understanding was that he is knocking down the garage and putting in a house. And then, a little bit down the road, he will be knocking down the other two houses and putting in another house or so. So, and I also have been trying to get plans for this property for the last two weeks, and there have been none, but now I'm hearing there are plans. So I'm just, that's just my concern. I mean, and I think that, I mean, I think at the last meeting, you had said that you had actually gone out and seen the property, which I really appreciated that a lot. But I think that saying that the houses are the same as those in Renfrew Park, which are completely different, and the houses on that street are not, it's not, it does not conform with the way that all those houses are, actually. There's a lot of, like, bungalow-y type things, like, behind it, and, you know, you want, you want things to be able to improve, but you don't want overbuilding and more, you know, more houses that people aren't gonna live in. You know, just because he says that he's going to sell the house, it doesn't mean we're not gonna get more short-term renters in. I mean, you know, it's just, and it's not that I don't want that property improved or anything, but I just would, before anything was approved, I would definitely like to see some plans on it, and I haven't seen anything.
Okay, Ms. Silvera, I believe that you can access the plans at the town hall. I'm not sure. I think you have to make an appointment with the building.
I've talked to Chris, like, every couple days. I have asked for it, and he said there are no plans for Zero Alston Avenue. So I just sent him another email, but I, I mean, I don't know. Do you have plans there now?
At 4:28 yesterday, I got a report, no plans. I got a report from Mr. Hool.
Oh.
At 4:20 something yesterday.
We don't have, we don't have, we don't have building plans that show what they're going to build. We just have a footprint?
Yeah, I'm surprised. There's, there's no elevations or anything except for what is in Mr. Hool's report I received at four, after 4:30 yesterday.
Because the last I had heard is he was waiting to see if he could buy it, you know, to see if his plans would go through. But that's just, you know, that's just neighborhood talk. So, but that's why I've sat here since six o'clock and, you know, been frustrated like everybody else.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Silvera.
Thank you.
Mr. Hatfield, do you have plans developed yet or?
I do. I think they're in the report. Danielle, did you?
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I sent an email to Mr. Costa on Friday as well to make sure that the elevation plans were included in the package and to confirm. I've, I've left several messages for both Mr. Costa and Celeste.
Celeste no longer works at the town.
Yeah, well, what, whatever the, the general mailbox, I've left several voice messages.
Do you have the ability to share those plans with us now via the screen?
I will, yes, I will try.
Angela, can you give her the ability to act as the host?
She's able to share.
Okay, thank you, Angela.
Testing my technological ability.
At 9:52 at night.
Exactly. So can everyone see them, the elevation plans in front of them?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll see, I will try. So here you can see if I, if I enlarge them too much, I'm going to try in a minute to enlarge them. So you get at least one rendering, but this shows the 30-foot width. So this would be easterly facing, actually, yes, easterly facing, westerly facing. Elevation, which when I pull in to show a little closer, the elevation is 34 feet, six inches. And this would be, I believe, I will, let me enlarge this.
It's about 46 feet.
Right. So here you would see the below is both the northerly and southerly elevations. So it's a three-story building. It complies with the, it's under the allowed height elevations for the district. And it, as we had put in our petition, it's 30 feet in width, which requires the 10-foot side yard variances on, on both the northerly and southerly side. So these are the plans that were made by Tessa Architecture and which I had emailed to Mr. Costa. He would be happy to resubmit the email, but I submitted this all on Friday in an attempt to make sure that everybody had everything. So I apologize if, you know, some email didn't get through or, or something.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant now that you've looked at the plans?
I just think that when they, they go up to this height, that they, when they want a side, a side yard setback, think that they got to give a little bit on the height of the building. This is a huge building for 10 feet away from the lot line. That's my opinion of it.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I, it's probably more for discussion, but it's, I, I do want to comment just in saying that, you know, this, this is the kind of home where people write letters to the newspaper and say that the zoning board is wrecking the neighborhoods. And the way our code is written ties our hands a little bit because you're either going to get a 20-foot wide house here that looks like an oddball, that's really strange looking, that really detracts from the neighborhood because a person is going to want to build out their lot. Or you're going to grant some relief on the side yard setbacks, which is the type of thing that they're asking for here. So it's, it's a, it's a situation where even if the zoning, the zoning board is, in my opinion, is, is, you know, trying to do the right thing by approving something with, with minimal setback, with, with as close to conforming as possible, but not able to because of the nature of the lot.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Hantoon, you're going to be voting on this one. See, if you have any questions, you can feel free to ask.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Excuse me for a minute. There was one more person that had their hand raised. Are you accepting anymore?
Yes, who is it?
It's Wendy.
I don't see her, but go ahead, Wendy, if you're there. Okay, thank you. Hello, Wendy, can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Can you swear that the testimony night will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name and address for the record.
My name is Wendy Durdwan, D as in David, U are U, D as in David, O G A N as Nancy. My address is 16 Center Avenue, Middletown.
Okay, are you one of the butters of this property?
I'm an exact butter. My backyard and that park lot connect.
Okay, tell us your.
I just, I just have a question. Can, can, can Matt explain the parking situation for the four-bedroom? Like where are all these cars going to go? Because I don't see, I don't see a garage. I don't see a driveway. I don't really see parking. And we, I have that issue on Center Avenue now with this, these houses are going up so big that the cars are parking on the grass, they're parking on the street. It just seems like the house is so big that there's no room left to park. So I'm just wondering where the cars are going to park and how that is going to be seen less to, to the property.
Okay. Matt, can you answer that?
Yeah, I have them set up going, you know, in the front yard. It'll be all pavers there. I think basically you can have four cars there, no problem. There's a chance of, you know, if there's more cars than that, they can park kind of sideways to that. But, you know, four cars for a four-bedroom, most people, you know, neither bedroom has a, it's a car. Most of these are families buying these style houses.
Okay, and then, so you, it's your opinion that there'll be plenty of parking off-street?
Correct, yes. I mean, I think the code is two, right? I mean, so I mean, it's double.
Right, but if the people that buy it from you turn it into an Airbnb and it has four bedrooms with double beds in it.
Well, yeah, I agree. But I mean, I think when you build, I mean, when you're building something nicer, I mean, this is a lot more expensive to build than a box with bedrooms. You're more apt to get Airbnb and a rental than more of a higher-end property with, you know, some of the details. I mean, I can't guarantee who's going to do that, but I mean, that, I mean, you're hedging your bets, the nicer the house.
And I, I believe it was Mrs. Silvera that mentioned that you're also looking at 188 to buy?
I have no idea. It's been kind of a crazy whirlwind. I, I mean, I don't know what the world's going to be next year. I have no idea.
But you don't have it in a contract right now?
Oh, I'm purchasing both properties, but I don't have a plan.
You are. So you'll be the owner of 188?
That's correct.
Okay, so I, I'm going to address my concern to you then, because I, I looked at the drawing that Northeast Engineers did, I believe, and I'm still looking at that back deck and it looks like, is that the only egress to the back house?
No, there's a front door and then that's the back door.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, when this came up, I told the sellers, you know, I'd be happy with just a, you know, stair egress going out, second egress going out. And I was just planning on doing like.
Okay, that's fine. As long as, I did see the other, I did see the other door on the driveway. It looks like it's part of the front house though, but that is egress to the back house?
That's correct, yeah. There's a front door too.
On the other side?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that was my concern there. Any other questions for the applicant? Angela, is there anyone in the, in the public forum that wants to say anything? Wendy, are you done?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm, I'm finished.
Okay, so is there anyone?
Yeah, it doesn't appear anyone else has a hand up, no.
Okay, seeing no further comment, I'm going to close the public hearing and request a, request a motion to accept as presented.
Motion, Chris Souza, motion to accept the application as presented.
Do I have a second?
Hey Jim, before we get a second, didn't we start our conversation here on making sure that we had the stipulation for the removal of the deck and that there would be egress? I think you cleared up the egress issue, but it should be in the motion based on the solicitor's guidance to us when we introduced this petition.
I'll take back my motion. Tom, why don't you put in a motion, the first motion?
I, I don't believe we can do it because the other property is a separate property, correct, Peter?
Well, the deck is, well, first of all, the applicant indicated that he's buying both properties. So he would be controlling those. The deck crosses the property line onto this lot. So, and the board has have a right to provide reasonable conditions, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Regan. Tom, if you can make that motion, that would be awesome.
Yeah, sure. So I make a motion to accept the variance with the stipulation that the removal of the deck on the property at 188 Alston is part of this proposal.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Chris Souza?
So Tom Heaney first, Chris Souza second. Discussion?
Well, I'm going to vote in favor. I will go along with it. If, if the board members, all the other board members feel it's, it's all right, I'll go along with it.
So Mr. Silvera's for it. Discussion?
Yeah, I mean, my decision's based on what I said before. If, if you don't give them side lot relief with the variance, they're going to have a 20-foot wide house there that can be as long as they want it. And then you're playing this little game of cat and mouse where you've just said no and they're going to come back with something that really is not going to add anything to the neighborhood that no one's going to be pleased with.
Yeah, I agree. This is definitely due to a hardship based on the unique characteristics of this lot. And I think what's been requested is the best, you know, for the neighborhood and is the best for, in terms of trying to ensure that this goes to a family rather than to a short-term renter. I think this, the quality of this design would at least put it in the, that camp and have someone really want to get that for their home or their second home. So I'm going to support it also.
Mr. Hantoon, your comments? Do you have any comments, Mr. Hantoon, on this? Nope, no comments. I'm, I'm concerned that it's going up three stories. I think that the lot is, it's a very congested area. I, you know, as, as I made it clear abundantly earlier in several petitions, there are two standards when you're asking for relief. There's a standard when you're buying a house that is already built. In this case, Mr. Hatfield is starting with a clean slate. So the relief that he's asking for is for a new build. And I question the fact that, is it the least relief necessary? He's building this to flip it. He said plainly he's selling it. And so the size of the mass of the house is to get the, the, the best price. Having said all that, you know, I'm reluctantly going to accept it, but, you know, I, my patience is going to run very thin very quickly when everyone comes in and says, oh, I've, I've got to build in the side yard setbacks because I bought this house and that's what I need in the neighborhood. That's not my problem. You know, there's other lots in other neighborhoods and when you buy a 5,000-square-foot lot, that's what you bought. So I am going to support this, but Middletown has to start addressing these issues because if we don't, if Mr. Moran had been against this and if Mr. Hatfield hadn't been able to answer the questions regarding the parking, this would not have been built. You know, so I'm just, I'm just letting everyone know that going forward, you know, we, we just have to start dealing with it because as Chris said aptly, this, we're going to take heat in the paper. I'm glad that Chris is taller than me. They say they write about the taller person. And so, you know, the last time we did a vote, Chris was the one that got hammered in the paper. And that, that wasn't fair. We vote as a, as a board. So I, I am going to vote in favor of this petition. And the reason why I'm going to do it is I've been assured that the back house has egress. Both Mr. Hatfield and Mr. Costa has assured me that they have egress. But, you know, going forward, I think we have to really be careful about what we're building and where we're building it. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Mr. Hantoon, just come back on and wave your hands. Are you going for it? Okay, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, thank you for your time tonight.
Danielle, would you please prepare a draft of the decision?
Will do. Thank you, Attorney Regan.
With that, it's 10:06 and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Tom. We have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
We're closed.
Aye.
Yep.
But before you adjourn, there, there is one more matter on the agenda and that's the petition of Nicole Chang. They understand if the board is ready to go for this, the evening, but I think at the very least it would have to be continued.
Yes, we will continue that to the first spot on the 23rd. Is that, you know, I just can't, you know, 10:07, we've been here since 6:00.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure for, for the public record so that we didn't run into an advertising issue.
No, we will continue the Chang petition until, till March 23rd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for pointing that out. And now I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Eight minutes past 10 o'clock.
I know. Martlin?
He can go all night.
It's still early.
Anographer can't.
I'm, I'm just glad I got to actually vote. Those are two four-hour meetings.
Thank you, Andy.
You got one vote, that's good.
Last one, so.
Now you feel like somebody now.
My participation feels like it was well-earned, so have a good night.
Yeah, David, that was on me. I, I felt bad for you, bro. I've been sitting here too. So, and, and Martlin's getting paid.
We want everybody to thank Ms. Angela. She did a bang-up job. Thank you, Angela.
Take care. Good night.
Good night, guys.
Night.